Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for this time on August 28, 2017. As always, we'll begin our meeting with a salute to the American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Brenda Baer in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, we'll note that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Mary Reynolds, and I would ask if she please call the roll.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Bowden?
Here.
Counselor Lippman?
Present.
Counselor Baer?
Present.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Bolduc?
Here.
Siding Mayor Edward Engle.
Here. Let the record show that all six counselors are present this evening, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. Also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Donna Woodham. We're going to start here with a presentation this evening, and a very special presentation with a very special guest, and I'm going to add, I'm going to come up front here to that microphone, and I'm going to ask Counselor Henry Lippman to join me, please. As I think everyone knows, it's certainly traditional in American towns and cities to have signs put up at the entrances to their cities marking special occasions and the special things that apply to the city and the city's pride and whatnot, and we have one such introduced to you tonight. We have four new signs coming up that are going to be made up, that are going to be placed at the four entrances to the city of Laconia shortly, and have one here tonight that we're going to unveil. And before I do that, I would like to ask that the Principal of Pleasant Street School, David Levesque, join us, please. Welcome, David.
Good to see you.
Okay, so as I said, we've got a new sign here that's going to be placed, Henry, why don't you come up?
Sure.
It's going to be placed at all four entrances, main entrances, to the city of Laconia later this week, and it says, "Welcome to Laconia, home of the New Hampshire Elementary School of the Year, Pleasant Street School." So congratulations again. I know we had you here when we had the designation, when you received the designation as New Hampshire Elementary School of the Year, so we congratulated you and staff members and students at that time, but it never hurts to do it again.
No.
So we're here tonight to congratulate you and everyone associated with your school, including parents. This gentleman, my left over here, is in that category. So congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This means a lot, not only to our students and faculty, but also, I think, for the city of Laconia. I think we have great pride in the city and great pride in our school.
Great. All right. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Just mine?
Yes. Well, yeah, you can take that. I know you have a thing coming up Wednesday night. You can bring that, if you bring that to that.
I'll hide it.
You're right.
All right. I'm not going to get arrested, am I?
You gotta bring it back, though.
Okay, our first order of regular business tonight is minutes, and that deals with the minutes to our last meeting, which was on August 14th, I'm sorry. Minutes to that meeting were distributed to the City Council on Monday, the 21st. No corrections or changes were received by the City Clerk. So if there is no objection tonight, I'm going to declare that those minutes are accepted by the council as presented by the clerk. Next up, we're on to consent and action items. The first one is on, let me find the, starts on page 16. Both of these relate to Motorcycle Week, and both deal with the use of city parks for fundraising. The first is the Weers Community Park Association, and they are requesting once again next year to raise funds at the Weers Community Park next to the fire station community center from June 9 through June 17, Motorcycle Week of 2009, to charge for parking, have the exclusive right to charge for parking in that city facility. I will note, this is an annual request that has been approved by the council, that's why it's on consent and action. I will call your attention, counselors, to page 19. We asked with the application this year that both the Weers Park Association and the Weers Action Committee submit a simple financial statement so we get an indication of how much business they do and what their expenses are related to these requests. So you'll see there on page 19 that over this last Motorcycle Week, they took in $4,855 and had expenses totaling $709, so their net proceeds from their effort there at the park charging for parking was $4,146. So a motion would be in order to approve the request from the Weers Park Community Association to have exclusive rights to charge for parking at the Weers Community Park, June 9, 2017, through June 17, 2017. Motion is made by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion?
Just one quick thing. They put their start and end date for 2017, not 18.
Oh, should be 18. I'm sorry. I made the same mistake. So if the clerk would be so kind as to change the dates on that to 2018, I would appreciate it. All right, so we're all in the understanding this is for Motorcycle Week 2018. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative that motion carries. Thank you. Next comes the annual request from the Weers Action Committee to raise funds at Endicott Rock Park for the same dates, 2018, and their application starts on page 20, and their financial report is on page 23. Counselor Baer.
Is somebody here from the Weers Action Committee?
Is someone in the audience tonight representing the Weers Action Committee?
Robert Ames had reached out and asked if we had heard there were any questions and asked if he needed to be here. I said I wasn't aware of any questions, but it doesn't hurt. But if the council had questions and needed to table it, it could always come back at another meeting, is how I left it with him.
All right. Typically, by council rule, applicants are not expected to be at meeting when something is on the consent and action calendar. So if we want to take it off the consent and action calendar and postpone table it to our next meeting, we can do that and put it on as a matter of new business, but it's not a requirement that people attend a meeting if the item is going, if it's anticipated the item will be on the consent and action calendar.
I just had a couple of questions on their financial statement.
All right. So does anybody else want to weigh in on this as far as the council, other counselors are concerned? Are you looking to postpone a vote on this?
No.
And I have, I'm sorry. I have one question myself with regard to the, I'll address this to the City Manager as far as the financial statement is concerned, and I don't mean this as a reason to or a means to either postpone or vote against this request, having nothing to do with the request itself, but, so I'm happy to have the information provided to the council if it's different than what's on this statement after the fact, so to speak. But I call your attention to the line on their statement where it says, "Parking income And what I don't see on this financial statement is any record of what their expenses for that week are. I don't see any reference to, maybe there are none, but I was under the understanding that some of the people who work that week at the parking lot are paid, and I don't see an expense item anywhere here for that. So I'm wondering if the $24,433 that's on here as income is really net income, not gross income. And I think we should have that clarified as to what the actual gross was and if they indeed did have labor expense, if you will, or any other expense during that week.
I will make that request and get the information for the council.
And your question had to do with what?
Well, when you get down to the bottom, it says, "Other income and expenses," and the only income listed is fireworks, which is $18,592. So then it says, "Other expenses, fireworks, $17,000, but their membership to the Laconia Motorcycle, the board, is $5,000, and it seems to be taken out of the fireworks income. Maybe it's not, but it looks that way.
I don't know why it's there.
My guess would be because it's not an operating expense, possibly?
Oh, you'd think there would be under expenses, it would, well, it is.
Well, there's a lot of general things.
It'd be normally under dues and subscriptions or something like that.
I don't know. That would be my only guess, would be that it wasn't part of the operating.
Why it's down there, I have no idea.
Yeah, it just seems strange it comes out of the motorcycle, the fireworks budget.
I think it's just where it's placed. I don't think it's out of that budget.
Yeah.
I can clarify that as well when I make the first request. We'll ask for clarification on that.
The other question was, are they a member of the board for the coming season?
I can partially answer that. So this $5,000 that's on this statement would have been for the 2017 rally year.
Right.
I don't believe that any current members, perhaps the city, I'm not sure whether the city's paid yet or not either, but I don't believe that any of the members have paid their dues yet for 2018. That I'm aware of, anyway. And there are some issues that are being discussed along those lines. It's not just, I'm not aware of any issues with the Motorcycle Association, but there are a couple of other members. One member quit recently, who's a dues-paying $5,000 member. So we know we're down at least one.
Well, that's why it's important to know if they're a member, because we're going to be giving them free a parking lot to raise $25,000, and if they're not a participant in the Motorcycle Week, it doesn't seem justified.
I will make the request to ask them if they anticipate funding the $5,000 and being a board member for the upcoming rally.
Okay. A motion being ordered, then, to grant the request of the Weers Action Committee to raise funds during Motorcycle Week 2018 at Endicott Rock Parking Lot by having the exclusive right to charge parking fees in the park during the Motorcycle Week event. Motion by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
We have five yes votes, no negative votes, and one abstention. Okay. Can't wait till we get to the council rules discussion.
I thought I saw it.
Okay. Citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate place on our agenda for anyone who is in our audience tonight to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda, not on tonight's agenda. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address at the top, please.
My name is Peter Betcher. My address is 20 James Avenue, Laconia, New Hampshire. Mr. Mayor, counselors, neighbors and myself have got a petition together, and I assume you all got a copy of this?
It's the street?
That is correct. The streets that were, what we feel incorrectly labeled as private streets.
Talking about Haven, Jane, Thompson, Morris, Clark, Baker, Kingsley, and Allen Avenues?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Yes, I do have a copy of that.
I have a few talking points, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
For over 100 years, the cities have maintained these streets, summer and winter. The city has paved the streets, provided engineering services for street construction. City has made decisions about parking on the streets. Lately as 2016, the council made decisions on parking on Haven F. City has installed signage. The city has issued building permits, variances to the buildings. Water and sewer lines were installed. Building values and taxes assessed as an accepted street. There's really no increase in cost for the city to take care of these streets. When you're looking at the total cost for plowing, it takes under an hour of a storm to plow all the streets. Few issues for the city if you decide not to accept the streets. The state of New Hampshire will not give you any city block grant money for these streets. They do qualify now, and as the city manager knows, they are available to you. City tax map, map number 139, shows the streets as accepted. New Hampshire Municipal Association, they have a legal case, Hurst versus Pawinsky, in 2007, and it states, "Acceptance may be by an express act or implied, such as opening up or improving a street, repairing it, removing snow from it, or assigning police controls to it." The city has done all these things for the past 60 years. If the city decides that we are a private street, the owners will request a assessment reduction, therefore reducing the city's tax revenue. Life and safety issues for residents on the unmaintained streets for fire, ambulance, police, and access to utilities. And also, the city may incur a long and costly court case with the property owners. We would like the council to vote to accept the streets at this time. And does the council have any questions?
Any comments or questions, City Council, at this point? Does everybody know what street package is being talked about here?
Do you have extra copies of your petition?
Absolutely.
You have one in your mailbox, Counselor.
Can I pass these to him, or can I go?
He has them already.
Okay. I have, I want all seven. Okay, well, here's four. Yeah, there's 30 property owners that signed a petition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have a matter they would like to bring to council? Yes, sir.
Can I speak on that matter?
I'm sorry?
Can I speak on the same matter?
I can't hear you.
To speak on the same matter.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Doesn't matter what the matter is.
My name is Sean Flanagan, 24 Allen Ave. Three years ago, we bought our property, and so one of the newer residents in this area, and spent considerable money renovating our property, got a new tax assessment that went up, and as a back home in Massachusetts, I'm a fire captain in the town of Sherburne. One of my biggest concerns is life safety and fire safety. I plan on retiring up here and moving up here, and there's a number of other people that I've met in the last two years that have lived here for many, many years in these roads. It concerns me that the city is going to stop plowing these roads because the, you know, the buildings are so close together as it is. Anybody that's ever seen a fire in a building, once one building gets going, they go pretty quick, and it's a major, major concern on my part as a fire captain back in Massachusetts that we will not be protected in the event of a fire. So I would plead or encourage the city to accept these roads, maintain these roads, and plow these roads so the residents up here can continue to live the way we would like to live and continue to improve our properties. I mean, even in the three years that I've been here, and many of the other people that are here tonight have been here for a long time, you're starting to see a lot of money that we are putting into our properties to improve those properties. And every year, the tax girl comes around and we get reassessed, a new rate, or more money for putting money into our properties. So I would really encourage the city council to look hard at this decision about not maintaining these roads moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So.
If I could just clarify, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Betcher and another gentleman came to see me last week with a petition, and that's why you've got copies in your boxes. I assured them that there was a process we were going through with over 40 streets, that we took the matter seriously, we had some more research to do on these particular streets, and I asked them to please spread the word back to the neighbors that there was no stoppage of service, no change in service, trash plowing, road maintenance, police, fire, there was nothing changing at all, possibly ever, but at a minimum through the winter season, and that we would continue to work, and I encouraged the two gentlemen who came to see me and any other property owners, if they were able to bring forward documents of their deeds or otherwise, that would help us determine that these are public streets, that that would be welcome on our part. So that was the.
So let me reiterate from those of you who are here tonight, from that package of streets, there is and will be no plan to discontinue any service, as far as I know, to that area this winter, at this point in time. So we're dealing with a complicated legal issue here that involves a lot of streets, a lot of miles of streets in the city that we've got to work through, but we're certainly not of mind to cease the traditional level of service arbitrarily or quickly on any of these streets. So let me relieve you of that worry, if that obviously is a worry to some or many of you, that the city would stop maintaining the street this winter or whatever. That will definitely not be the case. Okay? And we're in the process, later on tonight, we've got on our agenda a number of items that are related to this general issue, not to your streets in particular, but to, in a general sense, to a package of other streets, and is our intent, over the period of the next months, to get to all of the streets in the city that meet this definition, which basically means streets that the Department of Public Works has, and the councils passed have assumed were public roads, but that the city can find no record were ever accepted as public roads. So that's the list that we're going through, starting with the first six streets that are under, and I emphasize the word "starting." We're looking at six roads tonight, and with the intent of visiting all of the roads that fit into that package as soon as possible in groupings. Okay, having said that, is there anyone else who would like to address the council on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Counselor Lippman?
I guess I would like to add one more perspective, and I think the manager was relaying this, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but we want to find a reason as to that it was an accepted road. We're not trying to find a way to knock it out, we're finding a way to bring it in if we can.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Counselor Hammond?
Yeah. I wish maybe the city manager, while there's a group of people here that are concerned about their road, and, you know, just from listening to the first gentleman, it sounds like, you know, it's the city council that's doing this, and I wish either you or Wes would explain why we're at this point of what we're doing, because I think it's confusing as heck and why it's all here and we're looking at this, but it's because of the state and the insurances, and I wish somebody could explain that to these people while they're here of why we're doing this, or why we're forced to do this.
Sure, I'd be happy to give a brief overview on that. So state law does not allow for public dollars to be spent on private roads, and insurance companies are liability, insurance companies across the state are looking at communities to clean this up if there's gray areas. Ours, being an old city, we've got some streets that, just through record-keeping, were falling through the cracks, we're missing some information on some of these streets. So we've taken some of the steps to identify some of those emergency lanes, which allow the city to do a level of maintenance. We're discussing that standard of maintenance later on on tonight's agenda. We have identified some streets that the city has been maintaining that are very clearly defined in deeds and other records, that these are private streets and were never intended to be public streets. With those particular streets, we're working with property owners, in some cases with homeowners associations, in other cases without, but trying to give proper notice to remove those from the city's operation. We have a fair number of street, the majority of the streets, we just have unclear ownership information on them, and that's the process that we're researching our records, we're researching some records at the state, and we welcome anybody who has information on streets who can help us in that matter. So it is tied to state law, it's tied to our liability carriers, but it is not the desire of the city or the intent to change the level of service that we've been providing to people for years, and we're doing our diligence and taking every opportunity to get it right and be inclusive on this, and like I said, we are not making any changes whatsoever at a minimum through this winter plowing season, which would put us into next, you know, hopefully no later than next April 1st, but we'll see what the weather brings. But regardless of that, continuing communication, openness, posting of information, welcoming the public input all the way along.
Okay. All right, we have two public hearings tonight, and the first public hearing is on Resolution 22 relative to authorizing an appropriation of unanticipated revenue from the state of New Hampshire Highway Block Grant Funds of $294,633.74 per the adoption of this past legislative session of Senate Bill Number 38. So I'm, I have some legalese to read here for you, if you'll bear with me. Notice of this public hearing was made in the Thursday, August 17, 2017 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Community Center, and at the offices of the Laconia School District. Action on this item will be taken under unfinished business this evening. So I'm going to declare this public hearing open at 26 minutes past 7:00, and ask if there's anyone here tonight who would like to address the council on the matter of accepting $294,633.74 in unanticipated revenue from the state in the form of a highway block All right, I will declare the public hearing closed at 7:27 PM, and again remind everyone that we will be taking this matter up again tonight under unfinished business. Second public hearing is to solicit public input on the possible placement of a ballot question on the November 7 municipal ballot pertaining to permitted operation of the New Hampshire Lottery Keno 603 game within the city. So this is public input as opposed to a legal public hearing, and the long and short of this is, is the state legislature this past spring authorized the introduction of a electronic gambling game, New Hampshire Lottery Keno 603, but it's a local option initiative, meaning that every municipality must approve it by vote of the governing body, in our case, the city council, or I'm sorry, the electorate. And so the issue before the council tonight is whether or not to place the referendum, a yes or no vote, on allowing establishments, what they call pouring establishments, the state calls them that, meaning people with a liquor license, to have these in their So it would be a yes or no vote on the November ballot whether the city wants to allow these, this game to be played in pouring establishments within the city limits. So I'm going to open this public input session at 28 minutes past 7:00, and ask if there's anyone with us tonight who would like to weigh in on the subject of whether or not the city should vote on this issue on November 7. Yes, sir?
My name is Kent Rossberg. I live at 130 Endicott Street North in Laconia, and I would urge that this item be placed on the ballot, certainly let the public decide yes or no, if they want this or not. I am in favor myself, but that's not the issue tonight. The issue is, should the citizen agree, have the right to do that? I think sure. Give them the opportunity, let them decide yes or no.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. St. Clair?
I'm here only because I never knew about this until today, so I never had a chance to ask any of you what you thought about this. So since it's public comment, I do hope you place this on the ballot to give, like the last gentleman said, the citizens of Laconia a chance to weigh in on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Carl Peterson, I own Hector's Restaurant downtown, and I've gotten information from the state about this Keno thing, and they urge me to, the way I feel about it is if the city doesn't pass it, other cities will. So if Guilford passes it, or Franklin, or other towns, it could affect our business, you know, our local business, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to comment?
Good evening. My name's Dave Henrich, I'm the owner of the 405 Pub and Grill and the Lakeside Famous Roast Beef in the community. I urge everybody on the council today to support Keno. Keno is a great program for the local business, as you know, is going to generate additional revenue throughout the state, which will then continue to trickle back into the communities through the government programs and education programs. Again, as you say, it's going to be located in some of the local pouring establishments, and it's also going to create local jobs for the community, additional jobs. So I strongly support it, and coming from a community state in Massachusetts that does have it, it's a tremendous success, it's a system that I don't believe is abused. If anybody really understands, or has some questions about the game and how it's administered, I know we have somebody here from the lottery that could educate you about how the program is, and how it's used throughout the establishments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to stop the public input on this at thirty-two minutes past seven, and remind the audience and the councilors that the city council will be taking this issue up tonight under new business, under new business. Next up is the mayor's report, and I know we have a long agenda tonight, so I'm going to keep this very brief. Two things I wanted to mention very quickly. One is to thank, Celebrate Laconia, which is a committee in charge of arranging primarily for the various events that are going to celebrate next year's marking of the 125th anniversary of Laconia becoming a city, transforming from a township to a city. And they got off to a good start here Saturday ago, on the 19th, by hosting a celebration in Veteran Square for the 125th, and marking the 125th anniversary of the building of the Laconia Railroad Passenger Station. I know a number of councilors were present that day for the official ceremony, and got to participate in that, and we had an excellent turnout, it was very well organized, we had perfect weather, had train rides there, and any number of other exhibits and programs, bands playing, you name it. So I think it was a very enjoyable afternoon, and again, I want to congratulate all the volunteers led by Pam Clark and the Celebrate Laconia Committee for putting that all together, a lot of work involved just in that one day. And we look forward to the scheduled events for next year, starting with the celebration of the actual date, which was, somebody help me, March 24th, March something, which will be the actual day, to the day that Laconia was formed in 1893, and we'll celebrate that next year. And then there'll be other celebrations during the summer months as well. Second thing to mention is to remind everyone that we have a primary election, city elections this year on the 12th of September. We have one more meeting between now and then, but I want to get everybody to thinking about it. All six wards will be open on that day, and the polling hours are?
Eight to six.
Eight to six? Eight to six PM. So we have, we have, all six wards are open, and the reason that all six are open is because we have a special election for the, one of the Laconia legislative seats on that date, with two candidates, one Republican, one Democrat. So those polls will be open from eight to six, in all six wards, and then in three of our wards, one, two, and four, we have more than two candidates running for city council positions, and therefore there is a need for a primary. So if you're a voter in one, two, or four, there will be a primary election for your city councilor on that day, and they'll be, I think there, in each case, there are three candidates in each of those wards. So one of those candidates will be eliminated in each ward on primary election day, so there'll be two names on the ballot in those wards on November 7. And that's it. Committee reports. Any committee reports today?
Yes. Yes. That was quick, your segue was very quick to that. We met.
We.
We, meaning the Government Operations.
And Ordinances Committee.
And Ordinances Committee, to discuss concerns regarding the City Code, Chapter 113, animals as it pertains to restraint of dogs to an owner's property. I believe it was four weeks ago, five weeks ago, a gentleman came up and expressed concern because dogs were running through the electric shock fences, and he himself, his dog, had been attacked. So we put this on the committee, we met this evening to discuss it, and we had several differences of opinion, but what we have, I can either tell you the options, or I can tell you what we are recommending. Which would you rather? I mean, you'll want both, but I mean, which would you rather have first?
The options, I guess.
The options, the options are that, basically, the ordinance be left the same as far as restraint, that a fence is a fence, correct? That was where we were, that the fence, the electric fence versus a physical fence, that if the owner, that if the dog is there and well behaved, then.
Physical fence is not necessary.
Right, right.
That's option one.
That was, one of the things that was discussed. What we actually voted on was that if there's an unintended dog outside, that the owner should be outside with it, especially if it's an electric fence, or even if there's no fence, but that the dog should be monitored, I guess is the way. That way, the dog would not necessarily have to be tethered, it could be, you could still play, as city manager had mentioned, you could still play frisbee with your dog, you could still play fetch, but the dog would essentially be still under the owner's control. Then the next option, the next thing that we are also recommending is that we stiffen the violations in the event the dog runs loose. So if the dog leaves the property and attacks another person, attacks another dog, becomes a nuisance, we could step up an additional fine. The first time would be a fine, and then there, we would require additional restraints for the dog.
Is the sidewalk considered leaving the property?
I would think that's public property if it's on the sidewalk, city property.
In other words, if you're walking on the sidewalk, and my dog comes at you, and you're on the sidewalk, and the dog comes onto the sidewalk, is that a violation?
That would be a violation, yes. And then along with that, that if you're not going to be outside with your dog, the dog would need to be tethered, either to the ground or to a cable, mainly so that the dog could not go, get loose.
So are you seeking action on this tonight, or are you going to place this on a future agenda?
I thought we were going to seek action, to at least get it moved forward to legal, to get the legal language written.
I thought that was the committee's suggestion, is to get the legal language written out of the committee, formatting those ideas, and then having the legal language.
The council can expect this on a future agenda, as a recommendation.
Right, but we do need to decide if we want to move forward with this.
Okay.
So, and I don't think I missed anything, I think I covered it.
Any questions of Counselor Doyle? Okay, thank you. Any other committee business? Liaison reports. Anyone have a liaison report tonight? Okay, citizens request to comment on current agenda items. This is the appropriate place in our agenda for anyone who has joined us tonight to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda, is on tonight's agenda. Mr. St. Clair.
I don't have cable anymore with MetroCast because, quite frankly, I thought what I was getting, what I was paying for was not worth the money. Now, I don't have internet, I couldn't do a bundle of all my stuff, bundle everything up, I just had television. And I was always told that it is what it is because they've got the contract, they've got the monopoly. I saw on the, here you're going to be talking about, I know MetroCast has been sold, I don't know what will transpire when the city just changes over to that contract, to that new company, but I would hope that somehow, somebody on the council or in the city government is able to kind of tweak them a little bit, to maybe up the selections we have for all the money we pay. I travel a lot, and I see other communities that have much better choices for what they pay for, whether it's on their basic or the next step up. I won't even get into the other stuff that I'd like to with the cable, what they should be doing for the community. But I hope that somehow the city council is able to put a little pressure to get some cooperation from this new company, because the city does so much for them by giving them the contract. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda?
Mayor and council, my name is Bill Stanion, I live at 16 Boathouse Road. As a matter of emergency lanes that you'll be taking up this evening, I've been duly asked to come here, as far as the Pendleton Beach Association goes, to formally ask that Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road be put into the record as asking to be an emergency lane. And to that matter, which has been said many times at these meetings, that private roads cannot become emergency lanes, I would ask you to look at RSA 23159A, which certainly does give us the right to have that. It's up to you whether you want to have that done or not. But as a legal matter, and RSA is being the fact that they oversee any of this, it is in the RSA. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from council? So is this a statute that we're familiar with, I presume?
I'll have to get it in front of me. I think we've looked at it in some of the briefings that we had earlier this year, but I don't have it in front of me at this minute.
Okay, we'll take another look at it.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else? A matter that is on tonight's agenda. Yes, sir.
I'm at 243 Eastman Shore Road North. I received a copy of what's going to be presented tonight as the maintenance standards for emergency lanes, and it clearly states that this decoration can be rescinded or disregarded at any time without notice. That doesn't give anybody a whole lot of comfort. I know, I appreciate you folks doing this, the standards that were put together look to be pretty much what the standards are today, but the fact that they can be rescinded or disregarded at any time without notice is very disheartening, extremely disheartening. Tomorrow, I could go home and not have this service, without any input whatsoever. I do not think that that is fair and reasonable to the people that are on these roads, and I would very much like this stricken.
Okay, thank you. We'll be discussing this tonight under unfinished business, I believe, right? Yeah, we tabled that. Yes, it's our first item tonight under unfinished business, when we'll get to those recommendations. Anyone else? Something that is on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir.
My name's Chris Bell, I live at Texas Barbecue Place, it's down the pier. I believe that's on the agenda for tonight, right?
Yes.
You were asking for input. So I guess on that matter, I'd like to see the boulevard down there sort of open back up to the way that it was maybe fifteen years ago, where, what I noticed this year, when you're on the train, you can't actually see water, you can't actually see the business that I'm in. So that's my main concern for being up here, but I did notice that when you're driving down the boulevard as well, with all the vendors that are set up on the boardwalk, you can't actually see any lake in the City of the Lakes. So I guess that's my input on that, I would rather not see any vendor there. It doesn't matter whether they're food or t-shirt, I'd just rather that be open. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on then, thank you. We're progressing here to the city manager's report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also be brief, because I know we have a lengthy agenda ahead of us. We'll start with the street projects. Work is occurring right now on Winter Adams and Autumn Streets. That'll be wrapped up, I believe, this week, and especially in Winter and Adams, with the school opening later on this week. Once we get past Labor Day, somewhere after September 21st, we will be back down in the Weers, doing the final paving and the crosswalks on Lakeside Avenue again. We will also be addressing North Main Street from Oak Street up to Lexington Ave later on this fall as well. The drainage project that we're working on on Messer Street, that we've learned from the Winnipeg River Basin Program, that the city will not be allowed to pump water from our excavation site into the sanitary sewer system even after pre-treatment. So based on that answer, and the required excavation is now going to be timed with the next drawdown of the lake, which will be next fall. So we're still moving forward on that, but due to some cost issues that we're trying to avoid to make the project more cost-effective, we're going to tie that in with the drawdown of the lake next year. For those of you who have been by Busy Corner recently, the hardscape landscaping is in, our city crews have been there installing plantings, and we're there today, and it looks like we're pretty close to wrapping up, so that's going to be a nice improvement to that corner. And again, I appreciate CVS for donating the land and the $20,000 figure to the city for that initial landscaping. We've got irrigation in there, we've got some nice hardscape with the bricks and some of the granite pavers, and some nice hardy plants for that area as well. So that is going on there. Second report in your packet is the annual review of recycling and solid waste costs, the collection curbside comparison, year over year, this ties with our fiscal year, so we're comparing July 1 of '15 to June 30 of '16, with the most recent period of July 1, '16 to June 30 of '17. And basically, you know, we're within a margin of error, we're basically flat to where we were years ago, both in terms of the amount of solid waste collected, we're actually down 24 tons in the most recent period, and the total tons of recycling were up 62 tons. So a little bit, you know, more of a percentage increase in the recycling, but the cost of the solid waste remained basically flat, and the net difference in that budget over the course of 12 months was a little over $3,000. So again, not a huge number to report. One other item to report out on, actually two items tonight. The Busy Corner intersection question came up a couple of weeks ago from Counselor Hamill about whether or not it was feasible to do a camera system in there. We've worked with our traffic engineers, who are doing some work in the city right now, they indicate that it will work in that area, and they can, you know, design it so that it works with the five approaches to that intersection. So unless there's any objection, we'll find the money within the operating budget and move forward as a plan there. We also had a conversation with them about tying in the Guilford Ave intersection to have the timing of the lights coordinate between the two, to try to limit the amount of queuing and stacking up that can happen there at certain times of the day. And that's definitely an option, if funds allow, we could do that in connection with upgrading the Busy Corner camera for the intersection, or we could do it in another year, but again, it was still, we wouldn't be losing any efficiencies in cost, because we could do the Guilford Avenue one in a second year, and it would still, you know, tie in with the first one as far as communicating and working that way. So we'll start with the Busy Corner, we'll see where funds are, we'll see how having those cameras work, and that may drive how quickly we look to do the Guilford Avenue one. And finally, as most of you are aware, we had a fire at the transfer station on Friday. Indications are, it came in with a load that was being emptied, came out on fire and spread fairly rapidly. Crews did a very good job down there, both from the folks who operate the transfer station, our city crews, both Public Works and Fire Department. We had a water situation in there where we weren't able to access water through a dry hydrant connected to a pond, so we did need to bring in a number of tankers and bring water in that they were accessing off of a hydrant on, at Elm Street, right down the road. So it was quite an effort, but we are operating at the transfer station, we have We have rearranged a few of the sites where we're working out of, so the traffic pattern's a little bit different. There might be a little more congestion, a congestion there. We do have a structural engineer anticipated to be on site tomorrow to take a look at that structure for long term. Short term, the early indication is we believe it's usable and solid, especially this time of year where there's no snow load on it. Obviously, as we would come to wintertime, a snow load might change that. But we will be doing an assessment of the structure and making the appropriate determination, hopefully starting tomorrow. I don't know how quickly that report will turn around and get back to us, but we are operating there and crews are doing a good job in a little bit of a mixed up situation there right now.
Questions or comments for the manager? Councilor Barr?
Scott, could you bring us up to date on the Weers pollution problem that we had? Is the odor that was coming from underneath the arcade?
Yes, we had, we had found a, an older hookup that was not identified, that had come through and connected into the stormwater system and not going into the sanitary sewer system. So it was one of those good news, bad news scenarios where, I guess the bad news was it wasn't identified through a lot of effort going forward or in prior searches for it. This particular line, I'm going to look at our Public Works Director, I believe, runs underneath some buildings and up a hill on Tower Street and doesn't necessarily run a line, you know, inside the street or inside the sidewalk. So it was difficult to find. So that's the bad news is we didn't find it sooner. We did go down there and make the proper connection into the sewer line shortly after it, I notified the council. We did do a trench cut in there. The good news is we hadn't done the final paving yet, which is occurring sometime after September 21st. So we've done the work. We feel we're in good shape there right now. And we'll be doing the paving in the latter part of September down there.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? So this, this fire, the contents of a truck were on fire?
We believe that when the load was dumped, the fire was contained within that load and that it spread fairly quickly from there. I don't know if coming out and having more oxygen energized the fire or there was another reason for it.
What kind of material was it was on fire?
Recycling materials. It was a mix of paper, cardboard, had some plastics and aluminum and glass in there, but...
Was this a resident, I mean, was this a commercial hauler or? Is that an unsupervised area? I mean, is it somebody you just pull up and dump or is it an employee on?
No, no, no. Commercial, but with their staff, it's not our staff, but it's through contract with Waste Management.
But was any of our, I guess what I'm asking is, was any of our staff present during the dumping? So it was just...
It's the contracted staff that is there. So it's our facility, Waste Management contracts the operation. We have one dedicated employee who's there at the scale house. Occasionally, we may have other staff, but it's not our facility to operate on a daily basis. There was staff present, yes. Not our staff.
Not our staff?
Not our staff.
Was it caused by the truck itself? Something wrong with the truck that might have ignited it or no clue?
I don't have that information. I'm not sure if we've identified to that level yet. We do believe that the load was emptied and it was...
Did the truck pull away and then it let go or? No idea.
Again, I think none of us were really there.
We're going to look into see if the truck was the cause.
We were looking at a number of people, including the haulers. We know it came in, so we know who the haulers are on security footage and that type of stuff. So we're, we're taking a look at everything.
Did the truck burn inside there? Okay. I was just asking.
We don't know.
Just trying to understand the basics.
He's saying no, so...
So we don't know which truck did it?
We believe it was, we got a very narrow window where we think we've identified the truck that did it, yes.
Okay. But it wasn't like the truck driver called 911 or something or other? Okay. Hit and run dumping, huh?
Load was dumped, it pulled away and the fire was noticed and then it spread quickly from there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the manager? All right, we're on to new business. The first three items of new business tonight all relate to requests for building permits on, on private in quotation mark roads. And you will remember, councilors, that this came up at our last meeting and we did this in about 30 seconds without, to my memory, even discussing why we were doing it. And so some things have happened since then in terms of when and how did this policy get established all of a sudden that we are approving these things when there's no institutional memory of having done it before. So before we get into going through these, I'm going to ask the city manager, if he would, to brief us on why these things are suddenly appearing on the council agenda.
So state law and it's RSA 674, somewhere in there, we'll get you the exact citation, but identifies and it's had numerous revisions over as recently as 2004 and 2005 that requires the legislative body to approve building permits that are on private streets for the reason that there's a filing that occurs with the property's deed at the county, over the county courthouse, the registrar, that identifies that the property owner knows that they are building on a private road and therefore may not be entitled to some or none or, you know, any or all services that a city may provide. And additionally, gives staff an opportunity to look at the area where houses are being built on these private streets to determine if infrastructure, it could be class six roads as well in private streets, to determine if infrastructure supports the additional properties down there and otherwise is there going to be an impact to an existing class six road? Is there an impact to environmental issues and erosion and those types of things going on for the current road to maintain its usability, if you will? So this is something in looking at some of the private street issues that we've started with. This has come up. This was a big seminar at the New Hampshire Municipal Association Conference back in November, presented by a couple of attorneys who are specializing in municipal law and in streets in particular, which have a lot of challenges in New Hampshire's law, being as old of a state as we are. So at this point, the legislative body needs to make that determination as to looking at staff recommendations and determining that, yes, you approve authorizing the building permit for those roads. Going forward, we'll be working on something that will help, hopefully streamline the process with your permission and not require all of these, what hopefully are routine items to come before you. And that would be that we could identify some of these streets and you could give blanket approval to the streets that we could handle them administratively, maybe with a caveat that if we found something a little bit unusual or that we wanted to make sure we brought to your attention, that we would do so. The other item, and it ties into one of them here tonight, on subdivision approvals that are known private streets, but the subdivision has been approved by the planning board, those would not necessarily have to come before the council. We do have one in South Down tonight that, again, we're working through the nuances. So we'd rather err on the side of caution and ask for your approval of that. But going forward, some of those subdivisions that have been approved by planning boards, even though they're on private streets, do not necessarily have to come to you. And you say, well, our planning board's been around forever. Well, some communities haven't had planning boards around forever. They're relatively new in some communities. So that's why there's the stipulation that has gone through that planning review process, been approved at that level. So we're working through a couple of these, but that's what's driving it. It's tied into the private streets and we're hoping to streamline this so that, at the end of the day, these are still approved and we're still encouraging building in the city. And yet, we're not tying up the council agendas all the time with what should be some routine items. So it's nothing specifically that the city has initiated to put an extra hurdle. This is driven in state law and we're just looking to comply with the state law. It does provide some protection to the city that folks are signing a document acknowledging that they're purchasing, building, I'm not necessarily purchasing, but building, getting a building permit for something that's on a, on a private street.
So to clarify, this is not a new state law. It is new attention to an old state law.
Across the state, it's been either overlooked or relatively obscure and it's coming to light. And again, there was a large attendance at a particular session at the municipal conference and a lot more communities are now focusing on this and setting a new direction.
Councilor Barr?
But the fact remains that they've all gone before the planning board and met all the requirements and have been approved by the planning board. Yes or no?
Not all of these have.
They haven't.
So you think about South Down, Long Bay, for instance, that certainly went through planning board approval. And like I said, we've got one tonight that we want to act on just because we're in a gray area. But I think going forward, you're not going to see any more for South Down because of that approval process. Others that we've done, including the one a couple of weeks ago on Eastman Shore Road North, you know, that's a country road that has been extended, expanded, and maybe there wasn't a full layout of X number of homes. It might have been large tracts of land out there when that road was first created and expanded and maybe went from a path to a cow path to a gravel road or, you know, and so on. But there maybe wasn't a full-blown subdivision of how many houses could be built there. There might have been large tracts of land that have been subdivided over the years or in some cases now somebody may be taking an existing house and looking to tear it down and build something new. So a building permit is what's triggering this for a number of reasons, but there are a number of roads in the city that were not fully laid out in advance, you know, especially some of the older roads.
But if the planning board hasn't approved them, puts an awful onus on us just to pass it and it comes for us.
Well, the planning board wouldn't approve a building permit.
They would issue the building permit, planning board.
The planning department or the planning board?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the planning department would issue the building permit.
Not the planning board.
But the planning board's, or anything we've got a subdivision going forward, you're more than likely not going to see here. It's for roads, streets, in some cases neighborhoods, that were developed maybe pre-planning board days that you'll see. So some of the older ones...
So these have met the approval of the planning department?
Of the planning department.
Right. The recommendation is we issue these. We've looked at these from a staff and say, our recommendation is approve the building permit for these properties.
So if the planning department has approved them, couldn't we not bundle the four or five that are going to be in front of us as one package rather than?
I think it would...
We could get a long list.
We could. I think the neater thing is to authorize the streets. If we want to say, until further notice, anything on Eastman, you know, Shore Road North, handle it administratively unless you see something, a unique situation, and then please bring it to our attention, we can handle streets that way certainly for you. If you're voting on individual ones as you are tonight, I'd rather you take three individual votes.
You know, I think the broader point he's making is, using South Down and Long Bay as an examples, is we don't want to have every building permit application, but in those two subdivisions come before us. And what he's saying is, the building of those subdivisions were, even though the roads are private, were obviously done with full site plan review from the planning board. So we're hoping to short circuit those and so they don't have to come to council and whatnot and just have blanket approval of those streets, knowing that they went through the whole site plan process. Interesting fact, trivia, you were saying that there was only, there's only one class six road in, in the entire city. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Someone told me that. I thought that was interesting. I mean, towns in New Hampshire typically have many miles of class six roads in New Hampshire and La Conia, we only have one and that's the undeveloped portion of Hilliard Road. Is that correct?
I think it's in the report, maybe somewhere that we've got tonight.
So the part that comes off of Parade Road is a class six road and the only one we have in the city. It's kind of, kind of interesting. So that, building a building on a class six road would be a big deal in most rural townships in New Hampshire, but it's not in La Conia. So we're talking primarily. Okay. So any other questions or comments before we get, zip through these three that we need to do tonight? Okay. So I call your attention to page 31 for the first one, and that's request for a building permit at 118 Pendleton Beach Road. Motion be in order to approve the building permit for 118 Pendleton Beach Road as requested, contingent upon receiving all permits required by the city. Now that motion, please. Councilor Bolduc, seconded by Councilor Doyle. Any discussion? All those approving that building permit, please raise a hand. Six votes affirmative, that motion carries. Next up is page 34. This is 295 story Tyler Shore Road. Moved, the motion would be in order to approve the building permit for 295 story Tyler Shore Road as requested, contingent upon receiving all permits required by the city. Councilor Doyle makes that motion. Councilor Bolduc seconds it. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Thank you. Six votes affirmative, that motion carries. And lastly, we are at a building permit on Seven Trails End Lane. A motion be in order to approve the building permit for Seven Trails End Lane as requested, contingent upon receiving all permits required by the city. Councilor Doyle makes that motion. Councilor Bolduc seconds that motion. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. We have six votes affirmative and that one is approved as well. All right. Thank you for your indulgence on that. Next item of business is City of La Conia, Belnapp EDC loan extension. You will recall that I briefed the city council on this in some detail at our last meeting. The $1.4 million loan the city currently has out to the Belnapp Economic Development Council with those funds being used two years ago to purchase the Colonial Theater properties on Main Street in La Conia, 609 Main Street. You'll recall that the original loan was for approximately a year and a half and expired at the end of January, December of last year. The EDC came to the council and asked for an extension to April 30th. That extension was granted. The EDC came to the council again in April and asked for an extension to August 31 this week for that note. As I explained in some detail at our last meeting, the reasons for this, that deadline is not going to be met as well. And so tonight, we have the Belnapp Economic Development Council asking for an extension on that loan to the end of the year, December 31, 2017. Interest rate would remain the same. The city would be collecting, as always, approximately $4,000 a month interest on that note. And for the life of that loan, just the maturation date of it would be, it would be the end of the year. And let's see, Mr. Myers and Ms. Woodhaman provided me with some information that's kind of interesting. The city, when the note is paid off at the end of the year, the city will have received almost $116,000 of interest on this note over the life of it at that point in time from funds that were taken by our unreserved fund balance, which are in CDs or were in CDs, and they would have earned a grand total of $12,000 at current market rates in interest over that same period as sitting in the bank. So we have, we have profited, if you want to use that word, a little over $100,000. We'll have by the time the note is paid off in terms of the spread between what we're getting in interest from the EDC and what we're getting, we're getting, having the money in CDs at banks. So we have tonight with us Justin Slattery from the Belnapp Economic Development Council who is here to answer any questions if you have would like to address them to him in particular. Does anybody have any questions of me or Justin at this point in time? Councilor Lippman?
Hi, Justin.
Hi, Councilor.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Is in terms of the likelihood that this extension will be the last one you'll need or is it, can you give some perspective on that?
Well, I can tell you, we continue to make, make good progress on lining up all the funds. I know in two weeks I'll be back with Jack Dugan to speak more of an overall update and I know the mayor spoke as well. I would say it seems to be timing out pretty well that by the end of the year, we should have lined up everything. And based on some of the feedback we got earlier today on the historic tax credits, those have been secured as of this morning as well. So we can look at that as another two point, roughly, more than $2.4 million that we have sought in capital for the project that is now secured, along with several of our other grants as well. So I, I think that timetable is very attainable and we continue to make good progress on the, on the project, so.
Glad to hear that.
Anyone else? Councilor Hamill?
Yeah, it's not so much a question but a comment. I know this seems like it's taken forever. We've been talking about this for probably a couple of years now. But I think it's important that, I don't want to say that, that we don't rush this, but that we maybe go back out for more fundraising and that kind of stuff. And I guess what I'm, want to say is that we don't cheapen the building or the project. It's a, that building's been closed now for, I don't know, 15, 20 years or whatever. Another year or so isn't going to make that much difference. But I think the project needs to be done right the first time. And what needs to be done is when you walk in there and you look at it and you say, wow, I remember this when I was a kid.
That's right.
And, you know, and everything's put back kind of what it was with obviously all the good upgrades. But I just want to see it done right the first time. good upgrades. But I just want to see it done right the first time, so that when we open doors, we don't say, oh geez, no, we should have done this, and we should have done that. And, but, you know, I mean, if we need to wait a little longer to get more fundraising, hopefully people will donate to this, because it's going to be a remarkable thing for, you know, downtown La Conia area and the whole Lakes region, really.
Yep.
So that's my comment.
Well, I appreciate...
Do it right the first time.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate, we appreciate that feedback, and I think it's so important to do it right. And, and speaking of fundraising, it was interesting that the Class of 52 was in town this weekend, are having some of their festivities. And so we're working with them, and I know about 50 of them were in town, and they all took pamphlets on the project and want to make donations and so forth. So it's been, it's been quite the community project to see families and businesses and many in the community be a part of the fundraising and be a part of supporting the project. So very exciting.
Yeah, I know, you know, you've, you've gone through value at engineering and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, what are you going to take out to bring the project down more reasonable or whatever money that you have to, to invest into it. But, you know, just don't go too far.
We won't.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your continued support, and I'm sure we'll see you in two weeks, actually. We'll be back. So, thank you.
Motion being ordered to approve the loan extension request from, for the current promissory note for $1.4 million between the City of La Conia and 609 Main Street LLC to December 31, 2017. That motion, please. Counselor Bowens makes that motion. Is there a second? Counselor Hamel seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, that motion carries. And I would also remind the council, per the discussion we had two weeks ago, that Counselor Bowens and City Manager Myers and myself will be coming forward at our next meeting on September 11th with a comprehensive proposal for partially meeting the funding gap that remains, that will require additional city participation. And we're looking forward to discussing all the details on that with members of the council at that point in time. Okay. Next up is public input and general discussion regarding the city rental of boardwalk vending spaces during Motorcycle Week. So this has to do with a, a request, for those of you who don't know, that was put forward by a property owner on Lakeside Avenue, in and around Lakeside Avenue, that called into question the wisdom, originally the wisdom of the city renting vendor spaces to food vendors at the very northern end, or just off the very northern end of the boardwalk during Motorcycle Week. In particular, there are five vendor spaces of 10 linear feet each that are rented out every year to what could be classified as food vendors. One is to a soft drink vendor, 10 feet, and then 20 feet each to, to a pair of food vendors that have been operating in that vicinity. And so the request was to, to not allow food vendors to operate in that particular area from here on out. And that has, that has broadened into a broader discussion about what city policies could be, should be with regard to renting public property, whether it be the boardwalk or the street on Lakeside Avenue, to vendors in the future. So this is very informal, but I'm going to ask at this point in time, I know one gentleman who had to leave early already offered some input. Is there anyone else here tonight in the audience who would like to address the council or provide input on this general subject? If you can hold for a second. Former Mayor Paul Fitzgerald. Welcome, sir. He's limping a little these days, so it's going to take a minute.
It was a time when we were worried about a lot of escaped prisoners up at the northern end. If they put one of these on there, they would have cut them real quickly, I can tell you that. Good evening. My name is Paul Fitzgerald. I've been an observer of the rally for many years, as I think most of you know, co-founder of the Race and Rally Association. I appear before you tonight representing Mr. Jerry Gosher, who is one of the rentees of the vendor spaces that we're talking about. I've also been authorized to represent Mr. Tom Matthews, who also rented one of the spaces this past year. We would urge the city to continue last year's policy of renting the spaces to vendors, just as it has in the past. I realize there are some concerns and that there are issues that are always need tweaking. But to look at the policy issue, which I think is what's before you tonight, let's, let's think about, first of all, what the rally is for. And in the administration of, I think it was Mark Fraser, we had a grand discussion that fell under the title of who owns the rally. Several people claimed it. A lot of people didn't want to claim it whatsoever. But my thought was always that the rally was owned by the people who go to it. The attendees own it. It's their rally. And that without them, certainly, there wouldn't be one. So one of the driving factors in making our policy decisions should be, what do we do to make this a better rally for the attendees? Why do they come here? How do we enhance that? I think it's pretty clear that without vendors, the rally would be impaired. It might not completely go away if there was nothing to buy on Lakeside except from the permanent businesses, but the rally would certainly have a very different tone and probably would not draw the crowds that it is now, that it has now. I've been concerned, as I think some of you are, over the past several years with declining attendance at the rally. Many theories are offered. That could be debated endlessly, and I won't get into that tonight, but I think we all agree that it's a factor. So why would we do anything that would make the rally less of an attraction to our out-of-state visitors, our out-of-town visitors? I recognize that some of the good folks that own the businesses up there on a permanent basis think that these folks are competition for them. Let's think for a minute, what would that week be for our permanent businesses with no rally? What was it like before the rally grew many times over back in the 1990s? And it's not now what it was then, but it's still a heck of a shot in the arm to the permanent businesses, not simply right on Lakeside Avenue, but in the entire Weers area, as compared to what would it be if there were no rally? So while it may be true that if someone buys something from Mr. Gosher or any other vendor, that that person might not have bought that particular item from a permanent location, it's also true, but, but the existence of the rally itself, that would be a very dull week before the Fourth of July, before the season actually started. And there's no doubt in my mind that the folks who are asking you this, probably in good faith, would be receiving far less in the way of traffic up through the Weers, down on the pier, going into what I used to refer to, well, I still refer to as Irwins, and that entire area. So as you move forward with your discussion tonight, I just ask you to keep in mind, what would the impact be if there wasn't any rally? And why would we do something that would reduce, first of all, business competition, and secondly, the options that the visitors have in making their choices, whether it be a T-shirt, a sandwich, or something else? So on behalf, not only of my clients, but as a roughly 25-year observer of the event and patron of the event, I would ask you to keep the boardwalk open to vendors. I think it was one of the best things that we've done in a long time. I think that it's proven successful financially for the city, certainly successfully financially for the folks that are there in most cases, and we'd ask you to continue it. Mr. Gosher and I are certainly willing to answer any questions you might have either now or after hearing from other folks. Thank you for your time, as always.
Thank you. And before you leave, any questions immediately for Mr. Fitzgerald? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else wish to weigh in on this issue? Mr. St. Clair?
I would, excuse me, I would like to also remind the people in the room here on this table who remember what was going on up there before you had vendors on the boardwalk. I don't even remember what year it was we started putting vendors there, but before those vendors were there, all the attention on Lakeside Avenue was not looking at the lake. Nobody looks at the lake. The visitors are looking at the motorcycles. They're looking at each other. They're looking at what vendors were there, whether it was on the lawns or whatever. So our lake is, is a beautiful attraction, but during Motorcycle Week, I hate to say this, people see it and they love it, and they think it's beautiful, especially our visitors from the Midwest and other places where we don't have, they don't have as much water. But the reality is, is that once those, once the city opened that up for more vendors or businesses, that became an attraction. And all of a sudden, there was a lot more activity over on the boardwalk because of the, the vendors you let go there. And the gentleman left here, but I had to chuckle when he said that people get off the train and they can't see the lake. But I remind you that when you ride the train, no matter what direction, that's all you see is the lake, if you so desire to look out the windows and, and see the lake. So certainly, those, the view being blocked from, from the tents is no hindrance to the people that are on the train to see the lake. So obviously, with regards to the boardwalk or Lakeside Avenue, the city has always worked pretty well figuring it out, what works best for Motorcycle Week with regards to vendors up there. And so, that's
This is my turn to speak tonight. Family has owned property up here for, just celebrated 29 years, and I've been coming to the rally since the early 70s, late 60s, really. I've earned all my gray hair, like, you know, everyone has. Anyway, the, the city has a, an obligation to try to make as much money as it can in order to offset the cost of having that. And it's not just an event for the people who make money at it, but it's also a burden to the community and a burden to the city if we don't make enough money in order to cover that. So I would say more spaces are needed rather than less. And perhaps, I know that the dollar amount was adjusted last year for the vendors, but given the fact of how much money there is being available to be made, maybe that needs to be looked at as well. But if we have a negative balance at the end of Motorcycle Week of several thousand dollars, how are we to make that up? It shouldn't be by goodwill. It should be by opportunities that present itself to the city in order to do that. I want the city to be financially strong going forward. And secondarily, on an unrelated matter, is there a reason why it's not being televised tonight?
It's off the table.
It's not coming through anyways. I get several text messages. Anyways.
We are off the air, is what you're doing?
Off the air.
Oh, my goodness.
But having said that, I hope we would all agree that more spaces are better than none.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Driscoll?
Not going to have an emergency stoppage of the meeting because we're not on live, are we?
No. We're not underwater, so we're thankful that...
Oh, true. I'm not going to, I'm not here to rehash the issues just for record purposes. Joe Driscoll here for, from Martin Lord Osmond on behalf of the Ames family, their interests that brought this forward at the Winnipeg Market Place. Regrettably, they can't be here tonight due to a prior personal engagement. So I'm here speaking on their behalf, and I hope to be able to answer any questions that U.S. counselors may have, but have appeared before you on about three other occasions to deal with this issue. I do want to thank the mayor, as well as Counselors Doyle, Bowens, Lippman, and Hamel for coming down during Motorcycle Week to get eyes on this issue, to see it from my client's perspective. Obviously, this is a very unique thing to Motorcycle Week. Coming down the week after, you're not going to see the same thing. So obviously, everybody here is a very busy individual, and taking that time is very much appreciated. As I said, I'm not going to really rehash our concerns with it. I think that's plenty, plenty of evidence of that in the record. Do want to sort of speak more generally. I'm intrigued that the, the issue is, is kind of growing in terms of, okay, what's the policy for vending in general here? As you know, we brought the concern as to those specific spaces that the mayor outlined earlier, as opposed to general, sort of a rule for the entire boardwalk area and other areas of the city being able to be used during that week. Our concerns have always been the site barriers and the limits to walking and access in my client's establishment right in that area, because the access is directly next to these, these vending spaces. And I think this, some, some clarification needs to be, needs to be made when it comes to some of the concerns that are brought up prior to me coming up here. I do want to stress that the vending spaces that we're talking about are not, were not traditionally food vending spaces. So going back to the 90s, at that time, they weren't used for that. There was, portable toilets have been there. It was not used for a time. So this is a newer phenomenon that these vending spaces have been there. I was, you know, we have heard a concern from the individual who owns the barbecue place that there are site limitations for his location on the pier. And I know the Weers is very excited about the rejuvenation of the pier. It's, it's a very similar project to that of the Colonial, in that it was a, you know, a former haven and, and anchor for that area, and now if that can be revitalized. So anything the city can do in my mind to, to promote that and make businesses excel there is only, is only a big benefit. Obviously, yes, the city does need to make money, and having a negative balance at the end of that week is, is not something that, that should occur. And frankly, I know it's been a talking point for as long as I can remember, you know, is the city able to get everything that it, that it's owed, frankly, based on the, the impact to its citizens, the impact to its services that the state can provide? And, you know, always championing that cause to see that we get as much from them as, as this city deserves based on the impact it feels. But with regard to the cities, with this particular issue with the city, and as I've mentioned in the past, we've been informed on multiple occasions that the city has a waiting list for vending spaces. So it's not an all or none. It's not, we make money on this or we don't. If other types of vendors, if other things are utilized, if other areas are utilized, then the city can still make that money. And the city does have certain spaces that are devoted during that week to organizations that do not pay a vending fee there. So there has been discretion on the part of the city council when it comes to that event and those, and vending spaces on the, in that location, to not look at it from a purely dollars and cents into the city's pocket perspective, and we're asking for that same kind of consideration here. Prior to, prior to tonight, during the course of this discussion, certain things were asked of us, you know, can, can we get some tangible numbers? Can we get things? And so my clients have looked through the books, and we've been able to see a very stark decline in what would be, there's three businesses in there, as I've talked about before, the ice cream shop, the sub shop, as well as Patio Garden Restaurant. The restaurant has declined close to 20%, and that could be a decline in the rally. I think everybody has recognized that the attendance isn't what it was, as has been spoken to, and this is over the past 10 years. But there's been a, close to a 70% decline in the sub shop, which is...
This is the marketplace you're talking about?
Within the marketplace, yes. There's these three businesses. The sub shop would be a more analogous grab-and-go kind of food as to those vendors that are there. So when you look at those two things in contrast, observing the restaurant is more of a control to, a reflection of what's happening with the event in the sub shop as something, again, within the past 10 years, when this policy, when, when food vending was starting to occur there, that there has been a tangible impact. These are local business owners, people who pay taxes within this city. And frankly, the idea, it's almost growing based on the comments I heard earlier, that this policy or the council's efforts to visit what happens in this area turns into, okay, we're not going to have any vendors down there. Well, that's, that's simply not the case. We're talking about city, city-owned property, as I'm sure can be attested to by the permitting office. Everybody down there is asking for various permits. Lawns are covered, private properties. So vendors will be available to the patrons. It's not as though this goes away and simply the shops that are there during the year. Some people close their businesses and have vendors operate out of their business location, because that's frankly a better use of their property during that one week. But we do stress that this is a significant issue, and this is something that we are excited that the council has taken seriously and has decided to investigate further, and we want to be part of any solution that comes aboard, and we look forward to doing that. that. But just to put this in perspective to how, how this, how the thinking goes and the effect on my clients, we're talking about a tourist season within Laconia that we all wish was bigger, but we're talking about approximately 10 weeks a year. And then we're talking about one of those weeks, 10% of that operating season is this week, their major week. So this is a significant impact. This is not one in 52. This is one in 10. And that needs to be taken seriously. And if we are looking at this and expanding this to a policy as to what the city does when it comes to vending and local businesses, I highly doubt everybody would champion the idea of food trucks lining up out in front of Burrito Me or a coffee cart in front of, uh, the Wayfair or even a legal Zoom kiosk in front of Councilor Bowns' office downtown. Nobody, nobody would see that as, as a smart move to, to challenge the, the money that our local businesses could make. So we're asking for that same thought process here.
Any, any questions I'm happy to answer. Councilor Hamel.
I just have one question, Joe. The food vendors that go between the weather vane and, uh, the beef place, where's the beef, where's the beef, or whatever? Okay, that's, uh, basically along his business and actually you gotta, in order to go over the wooden bridge to get to his business, you walk right by vendors that sell food. So does he have the same intensity about getting those vendors out as he does the city?
Uh, that's private as far as I know, so it, it is, it is a different concern and consideration, uh, asking the council to dictate what private landowners can do on and off their property is a stretch they're not willing to make. Uh, but more importantly, it's actually the configuration of anything. Going through there does not block your access to the wooden bridge. It doesn't block your sight lines to the various establishments that are there, all of which occur down on lower area.
If you walk by there, you can't see the building very well?
Uh, you can see the top part, you can see the Winnebago Saki Marketplace sign, all of which you can't do if you're walking down the boardwalk unless you're way back by the beach.
Like I said before, I can hide an aircraft carrier behind a building. Just like your perspective of where you're looking at the building. And you can walk up the boardwalk most all the way and that building sticks out like a sore thumb. You know, and another thing that was brought up was the, um, access from the road over the tracks to go over. Well, last year, the Ameses put a sandwich sign right in front of that sidewalk that goes from the road to the sidewalk, which was blocking that entrance right there.
Uh, we had had discussions with the city that a sandwich sign was appropriate.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, though, it did cause people to go around it.
Um, I, you know, it, it was pretty clear standing there in that area that you couldn't see it as evidenced, uh, my client asked Councilor Bowns if, if he could spot the building and he did, it turned into 360 and he couldn't initially. I think that's a very telling sign.
Okay. Councilor Bear.
Um, to Mr. Fitzgerald's point, uh, they would have nothing without Motorcycle Week there. Could you provide, or why haven't we seen some financial figures showing what the business did the week prior to Motorcycle Week and what their financial situation was the following week? I think you would see that they did very well during Motorcycle Week.
Well, I, I think that's the crux of my argument, is that this is the Super Bowl, if you will, of their season. And to challenge and to take from that is to take from the week that business owners through that area bank on. Providing their financial statements to then be kept in a public record is not something they're willing to do. That's why I communicated our concerns about profitability, uh, through percentages, uh, so to give a, a sense of, uh, what this reality is to the council without having to file anything, uh, in a public document.
Yeah, and can I just ask-
Councilor Hamel.
Um, you know, something else that Paul brought up was, uh, you know, I go back a long ways here too, and saw a lot of Bike Weeks and worked a lot of Bike Weeks. And, uh, when vendors weren't on that boardwalk, we did that, we started that in probably, I'm gonna guess 2006, somewhere around there where the council discussed funding Bike Week, uh, outside the city budget as far as being taxed to your property. Um, and I remember back then, there was hardly anybody up that end of the boardwalk. It was, they were all from, you know, down further south, uh, of the whole area because there wasn't a lot of vendors in that area at the time. So they never even went up there, you know? So, um, I think probably the vendors on the boardwalk are actually helping them out to get, draw people up closer to them and up that end of the street.
Well, respectfully, I disagree. I think the numbers reflect that. Um, I too have spent many Bike Weeks. I know I appear younger, but I lived 300 feet from this location since I was nine years old. I've seen the decline of the event.
Absolutely.
Which I think is reflected in our numbers that I, I've provided regarding the restaurant. But a 70% decline in the sub shop coinciding with the time period you're talking about of putting food vendors there, I think is a numbers way of looking at this that shows a negative impact as opposed to a positive one.
Okay. I was at, uh, a, a food business on the pier, uh, quite a few times over that week, made it a point to go down there. And this particular business was pulling his hair out trying to keep up with the business that they were taking in.
That's, that's very good to hear. Um, I'm not here representing their interest.
I, I understand.
Positively or negatively about their week.
That does raise an issue I wonder if you could shed some light on, uh, that's confusing to me. When, I don't remember if it was, uh, the first appearance or the second appearance, I think it was, uh, I think it was, uh, Michael Ames who, who, could've been you, but I don't remember, uh, who presented, uh, and I can't remember if it was just verbal or in writing, but evidence that the, the Ames family's position was supported by a list of other restaurateurs in the area there, and there were specific businesses and names mentioned. And again, I don't remember if it was verbally or in writing. But recently, is that the, I don't have my copy here, the council was-
They were the same names that they sent-
That was presented with a petition here within the last, uh, couple of weeks. I don't remember exactly when we got it. It was apparently put together by the two food vendors that are in those two spots there, which lists a number of restaurateurs in the area, in the immediate area there as being in favor of these two vendors there. And they're the exact same names that Mike Ames mentioned as being opposed to it.
Well, we did give you a letter that we-
Crazy Gringo, Where's the Beef, Tower Hill Tavern, et cetera, et cetera. So we were told by you all that they were opposed to it as much as you were, and now we get a petition saying that they don't, they're not opposed to it at all.
Well, ours was also a petition, and I presume that's in the record somewhere because we've-
That's right, it was. So we got to sign both petitions.
So I, I can't speak to a change of heart. I can only speak to what my clients, uh, process and what they've gone through with this. Obviously, this needs to be a vetted issue. Um, who knows what the questions are that everybody's being asked, but somehow we ended up on literally opposite sides.
I will note, I will note on the opposite side or on, on your side that, that, uh, the, the restaurants that are out on the pier did not sign this. The ones that are immediately behind were that, uh, we have the, the pizza place, the barbecue place, and the restaurant. Are there more than that? I think-
I believe it's those three that-
Ice cream, I mean, uh-
They didn't sign this petition in support of it.
In terms of individuals who have spoken to me, yeah.
And one of those gentlemen owners was here earlier tonight.
Councilor Rippon.
I guess, um, rather than sort of staking out positions here, I think that we ought to refer this to seeing if we can improve the situation for all the parties involved is my kind of view of it. I mean, having gone up there, um, and seen the situation, that there was some less than ideal, um, configurations of how things are set up. On the other hand, you know, there's a balancing of interests here. The city has this in a somewhat like an enterprise fund, it's gotta support itself so we can't afford to lose, um, vending fees. And we're getting closer and closer to break even. Fortunately, we have some small level of reserve in, in that fund from prior year successes. But I do think that if we kinda try to come together and try to make a win-win situation, we hopefully can improve it for everybody in the, in that part of the neighborhood there, if you will. And I'm not sure what the exact form of how we're gonna pull that together, but I think, you know, rather than volleying back and forth here, I think, let's see if we can find a-
Well, to clarify one position, and maybe I'm getting this wrong, to, to, to speak to Councilor Lippman's point, my understanding is that, that your clients do not object to having vendors in those spaces. They just don't want food vendors. Am I misunderstanding that?
Uh, that's our position, and I, just for clarity's sake too, um, there's multiple layers to that piece. The food competition directly obviously is one, but as you saw from coming down there, the trains there, those food truck structures are there, you have four people wide, you can't, you can't-
So simply put, would your client object to the city renting that 50 feet to non-food vendors?
I don't believe so, but I'd, I'd have to check with them. That's what we came to originally with about a year ago.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it's, there is a, a huge amount of congestion there, and if there's a way to decongest it based on reconfiguring our vending spaces. I know there are certain limitations with respect to the construction of the boardwalk in terms of wood versus, you know, concrete or whatever, but it seems to me that, um, there are a number of interests here that could be protected. And I think the city needs to maintain its revenue base. I think we want the pier to be successful, we want the Ameses to be as successful, and I think in terms of making it, uh, you know, vendors being able to, to add to the event, we want that too. So, I mean, I think there's quite a bit of real estate that we have along, um, the boardwalk there, and I'm hoping that we can be creative and come up with something that, I don't know that we necessarily have to move the food as much as we have to be able to provide a little less congestion there, both height and just intensity, because when the train pulled in, you know, it's really gets to be a little bit, uh, unsafe there, I think, in terms of people getting in and around and getting, trying to get behind places. So, um, I'm not, again, not sure how we wanna structure the, the problem solving, but I don't think we're gonna solve it across the table tonight.
Is there any other place down in the Weers that the food vendors could move? Any private properties?
Oh, I'm sure. I know the Ameses have even talked about areas that they own that could handle it. But that's, again, you know, exchanging with a private, I'm not sure how that would mechanically work from a council perspective.
Has any thought been, yeah, but just, has any thought been given to alternative public spaces?
Um, I believe so. I'd be happy to sit down with, uh, the city manager, just sort of review what-
We can't put it on the boardwalk, obviously.
Yes.
I mean, for fire hazard reasons and weight reasons.
I just want, if I may-
Can I, can I go to Councilor Bolduc first, please? He has his hand up. All right. Councilor Bolduc.
Well, I can remember way back when this all started, that there were no services there for, um, sewer and water. So the city put sewer and water there so that they would take care of those three spaces or four spaces, whatever it is. So, you know, we've spent all that money doing that. I went up there and I, you know, it's crowded everywhere and people have to take their space, but I don't see how this interferes with anybody. Uh, it, it, it works well. People are there, they're buying, but we have a place and a source for the storage to go into the storage system and water coming to these people without having to run hoses and all kinds of other stuff. And to me, that's where they belong. They just, I, I just don't understand how that's interfering with them at all, not whatsoever.
Councilor, Councilor Bowns.
I just want some clarification because I'm not sure I understood from our last meeting and this meeting. Is there any other city-owned vending spaces that are set up especially geared towards food vending? Because it's my understanding that that space is set up for food vending. Is there any other city-owned vending space that is set up for food, food vending at the boardwalk?
No.
At the boardwalk, no. Those spaces are on asphalt, and as Councilor Bolduc has pointed out, we've put some water lines in some gray water, um-
Not sewer, if that's-
Not sewer, but it does, it does drain to a proper location rather than just falling off, so we've made some investment. But the asphalt is key and those are the only spaces that we've dedicated it to.
Dishwater can be properly disposed of, for example.
I, I just wanna make sure that if we, if we make the decision to not put food, food vending spaces there, we've essentially made the decision not to put food vending spaces anywhere at the Weers.
Well, you have to ask the question, though, of all the other food vendors that are down there, take for example, the ones, I think the Ameses themselves rent space to food vendors, do they not, further down on Lakeside Avenue?
I believe further down, there may be one.
And we know there are food vendors down on the other end of Lakeside Avenue. So what are they doing for water and, and-
There's gotta be something there, yeah.
They don't, they don't.
Some are toting it in with tanks. Uh, we have restrictions about what can be dumped into storm drains, what they do with any kind of gray water, greasy water. Fry later grease is a big thing in that area, so we're constantly monitoring to make sure there's not illegal dumping of that stuff.
But it's not undoable, clearly.
It's not undoable.
There are places all over the Weers that are selling food that aren't hooked up to water and, and wastewater facilities.
Okay, I understand. I, I'm just getting clarification here, so that, I, I understand the issue.
Well, and we've already established that there's a lot of vendors anyway, so whether it's a food vendor there or another vendor there, the, the space would be sold as vending. In my perfect world, we would have all the food vendors, or not all, but we could have a, for lack of a better word, a food court down at one end of the Weers, and then the restaurants would be at the other end of the Weers. And you would have, be able to accommodate vendors, food vendors in one area, and you'd also keep the local restaurants happy as well. And regardless of whether the pier was busy or not, it would at least open up that entrance to the pier a little bit more.
Well, the, another interesting aspect to what, to that observation is that for those of us who have been, um, observers of Motorcycle Week, especially in recent years, uh, the, the amount of people, the amount of traffic on the lower end of Lakeside Avenue at almost any time of day or night down there far exceeds the traffic at the northern end, especially at night. Uh, I mean, that's just a, and I've seen that change-
Yep.
And evolve more and more, that the, the sign, then, in other words, the end of the street where the sign is, especially from dusk on, is much, much busier than the northern end of the street in terms of foot traffic, much, much so, so.
Well, and you have the larger, hey, areas there. You have the, the drive-in area.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is if I was, if I was in that business of selling, I'd rather be down there where the, where the people are, because the crowds are much larger, uh, in the evening and at night, uh, at the, at the southern end than they are at the northern end. Councilor Hamel.
Have you had any discussion with the food vendors?
Uh, no, we have not. We wanted to get through the process with you folks to get everybody to see it and see where everyone's heads were. And like I've said in the past, we look forward to working with people to come up with a solution to this. So if those people can be brought to the table, well, why not? Let's, let's talk this out and see what we can come up with.
Any other questions for Mr. Driscoll while he's here? Have you got anything else?
I, I would entirely, I, just a procedural, how, how does this move forward from this perspective?
Well, that's what we're gonna talk about here in a second, is where does the council wanna go with this? Tonight, the only thing that's on the agenda is public input and general discussion. That doesn't prohibit us from making a decision, but it's, doesn't dictate one to be made tonight. So I think Councilor Lippman is suggesting that more study is involved or-
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody's sort of made the case of what their issues are. Now's the time, I think, to come together and see how we can-
So what's the mechanism for doing that?
Well, um, you know, I, I guess we could use one of our committee structures to do that, or we could have a special ad hoc, um, work group on, on this to bring back a recommendation to the council. I do think that, um, you know, as much as that's the way we've always done it kind of philosophy is, is, you know, you wanna do that, I think, you know, things are changing. There are, you know, the, the pier is changing, there, there's, the event is changing. I think having some flexibility to try to make it work for all of us is, as opposed to having antagonism, which takes away from the event, I think is, is where we ought to be landing here. And I, I'm not gonna solve it around the table tonight, and I think we need some form to try to be constructive for one another.
So what are you suggesting then?
I'm suggesting either, um, since it comes under-
How about land and buildings?
Land and buildings, uh, that could be one form in which we could continue this discussion, um, in a more concrete kind of way, or if the, I know council as a whole has been interested in this topic, is whether we wanna do it as a, a committee of the whole and have special- in this topic, is whether we want to do it as a committee of the whole and have a special meeting on that. I'm open to either approach.
Just wanted to point out, I'm not sure if there are any other speakers, we've kind of paused here and focused here, but there still could be other speakers.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't ask that. I sort of assumed Mr. Driscoll was waiting until the end here, so.
Always correct.
Is there anyone else who'd like to, hey, we've already heard from Mr. St. Clair, let me check, and is there anyone else who wants to speak for the first time? Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Oh, you want that sheet?
Yes, sir.
Gerald Gosha, I'm the owner of JR's Grill, which is one of the food vendors that's been discussed.
You're the one that's furthest north.
That's correct, closest to the Ames property. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify something with that petition that was all signed. The pier, the restaurant on the pier did sign that. George from Anthony's is on there.
Okay.
So, we, we had all the restaurants, we went to, we knocked on every door, we talked to every restaurant, and every restaurant in that area signed the petition, they agree that they like us there.
I don't see Sal's Pizza, and I don't see.
I said restaurant, not takeout food. So, Sal's Pizza and the barbecue, they're takeout, so I, I'm not including them. I'm talking restaurants. So, we had the pier, we had the Weather Vane, we had Tower Hill, we had Weers the Beef, the Paradise, and.
Crazy Gringled.
Crazy Gringled, all of which signed the petition, they like us to stay there. In fact, most of them are customers of us. We serve something that they don't. We have, we have walk-around food, people come up to us, they'll buy a sausage, they'll buy chicken tenders, they'll buy french fries. They eat that while they're walking around, they're looking at motorcycles, they're enjoying the rest of the, you know, the Weers Beach. There's plenty of traffic that goes by us to go up the hill to Mr. Ames' property to sit down, they listen to the bands, they drink beers, they may eat some food there as well, ice cream, what have you. There's no, I mean, it gets congested, but there's no way impedes anybody getting up to his property. They, if they want to go there, they walk straight up to the, to the property. As far as there's a second exit and entrance over where Weers the Beef is, and he's not complaining about that one. He's, you know, there's food vendors there, it's a much narrower strip for them to enter that bridge, and that's not a concern to him. We feel it's just competition, he's, you know, he doesn't want the competition there, but we feel it's good for everybody. We have a petition that was signed by all our customers, and just on the slow days, we had people just signing, and we have over 750 from my booth alone, Sharky's had another 500, I believe. These are the customers that come to the rally, they've been there for many years, they've bought from us for many years, and they want us to be there. They like us there, they like what we provide them, and they like to have it continue.
Where were you before that space?
Where was I?
I don't mean personally, but where was, where was, were you a vendor at Motorcycle Week prior to being in that location?
Yes, I was at the city property, I was over at the fire station at Lakeport. So, I had rented from the city prior to that spot, that spot become available, and I went over. I guess there's been a lot of vendors there that come and gone, and once I got there, it stabilized as far as the two spaces that I rented, and I've been renting them ever since. And Sharky's has been there slightly, I mean, between the two of us, we've been there about 14 years in those two locations combined.
And where is your home base?
I'm in Hooksett, New Hampshire. I grew up in Laconia, I've been coming up here ever since I was a little kid. We've vacationed up here every single year, I know, I know the property well. Someone made a comment too, earlier about, you know, you're setting up a shop in front of stores that are, you know, restaurants or whatnot. We do the Pumpkin Festival, I'm also a vendor there. We set up in the streets, and, you know, there's, there's regular restaurants and everything around, but more importantly is during that festival, they bring in more people than it normally would during those times. So, if you have a weekend where the festival's going on, there's more business, there's more people, so even though the local restaurants, they're making more money. Same thing with Bike Week. Bike Week, when the rally's going on, there's a lot more people there than there are if the rally wasn't there, so.
So, for Pumpkin Festival, you're in the city hall parking lot?
Previous two years, yes, this year it's changed. Now, they're, I guess they had, I was never over the other side, but they had vendors on the other side as well as the city hall. City Hall is where the electricity was, so that's where a majority of the vendors were. This year, they're going to be, there's going to be no city hall parking, no, no vendors over there, everything's going to be in the center. So, where the, I guess where the jack-o'-lanterns and everything were, that's where all the vendors are going to be throughout that area, so all the food vendors will be there.
Where?
Where they had the.
Veteran's Square.
Beacon.
Is that what, so Veteran's Square.
Beacon West, you mean? Okay.
So, they changed the whole layout this year, so I can't tell you exactly how it's going to be, but we've been doing the Pumpkin Fest, this will be our third year. So, we feel we do a great job, we don't put any signs out front down at the Weers, we keep to our space, we keep it nice and tight and tidy and looks good, but we don't put any A-frame signs that would, you know, people would run into or trip over, things like that. Our condiments are up and, you know, on, on the trail, so we try and do a good job for the city.
So, one of, one of the issues, since you're here, is in terms of sightlines and whatnot, that those of us who took the tour with Mr. Driscoll during Motorcycle Week are, you know, you can't help but notice, is the height of your booth, and you have, you have basically a false front on top of your trailer with flags going up on top of that.
Correct, Marky.
How necessary to your business is the, the added height of your booth?
Well, with any, with any booth, whether it be a tent, trailer, anything, people put banners. So, even if you have a tent, people are going to put banners up, it attracts business, it's letting people know that, you know, you're there.
If you look down from your tent toward the train station, are you going to see any banners flying above any of those other tents?
I'm saying food vendors, I'm saying large, large T-shirt vendors, things like that, they will all have signage. As far as sightlines, depends on where you stand. You, you know, there's a big tent right in front of the Weather Vane, you know, beside it, the, the front entrance. So, if you're standing there at their tent, you can't see Mr. Ames' property at all, and that's on their property, that has nothing to do with the city property, but yet you can't see the Ames property. If you move over a little bit, you can see it perfectly fine. If you move down, you can see it. It all, it's all perspective, it depends on where you're taking a picture from, but, you know, there's, there's certain places that you can't see, and there's certain places that you can see absolutely perfectly. And we, as an, add a note, I mean, this is something that we make our money, the gentleman on, the attorney was talking about, you know, Mr. Ames making their money, well, this is something that we make, we depend on events like this in order to pay our bills as well. You know, we need these events, and to take it away from us would have a dramatic impact on our income. So, we have the same argument as far as that goes. I know we're not, you know, a local and, you know, we don't have a permanent establishment, but we still rely on the same dollars. We visit here all summer long, we give our dollars all summer long, we're, with our boating and, you know, gas and restaurants and everything else, we put a lot into this city, so it means a lot to us as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other first-time speakers? Mr. St. Clair, you wanted to add something?
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that the entrance to the pier is not blocked. The entrance to the pier is only as wide as the pier is, and that is not hindered by anything. So, that's very important, because I heard somebody say that. And the second thing is, it is not an unsafe situation there on the boardwalk, anywhere on the boardwalk. Had there been an unsafe situation there, city management, or myself, or somebody else would have, or the police would have pointed that out. So, there's not an unsafe situation there. I suppose if somebody stumbles onto the railroad tracks or stumbles on the boardwalk or something, you could say that's unsafe, but it's not. And it's, you're right about the south side of Lakeside Avenue being more congested, because there's more vendors there. If you look at the amount of vendors we have on the top half of Lakeside Avenue as compared to what's from Hampshire Avenue down, there's a huge difference there. And when we put the lights up on Lakeside Avenue to light up the north section there, that helped a lot for showing people what there was stuff going on in the boardwalk, and not just on the arcade side. So, those lights helped a lot lighten that up there. But that, that's why it's always been more congested down there, because there are more vendors down there, not, not for any other reason other than that, so.
There's more vendors where?
On the, on, from Hampshire Avenue south to the, to the sign.
Well, that's three-quarters of the length right there, you're comparing one-quarter to three-quarters.
Right, but people are saying, well, it's more congested down there, and it's always been more congested down there, the crowd always forms down there.
But if you take the upper quarter versus the lower quarter, the lower quarter has much more people on it, and it's not because there are more vendors down there.
Well, that's what keeps the people there, they're certainly not roaming around because the road's better there, especially at night.
Roaming around there because that's ground zero, it's right across the street from the Roadhouse, and, and you got all those food vendors on the corner there, I mean.
There's more activity down there.
There's more activity down there.
Right, more vendors, that's what I'm saying, there's more activity.
But not on Lakeside, a lot of them are around the corner.
Well, again, if you look at it, it's, it's all part of the, from Hampshire Avenue back, that's all I'm saying there, but.
All right, Council Lippman had a question.
Charlie, I witnessed with my own eyes in terms of the, the train pulling in and people kind of, that situation is congested, and.
It is congested.
And, you know, someone not looking the right way, something could happen there. And not, not to say that it's not safe, but it could be safer than what it is in terms of providing a little bit more circulation space. I mean, it gets, gets pretty.
That's right.
Gets pretty tight in there. I guess my, my appeal to all the parties before us is, you know, everybody can take their own position and say, I want it just to be the way it is, but if there can be a little give and take, I think with this whole event, it's going to be better than everybody pissing on each other, so to speak, and making the whole environment negative, you know, and I think that's, that's one of our challenges as a city, is to try to keep this positive, and I think, you know, I'm not looking to push anybody out and hurt anybody's business, on the other hand, I think there are legitimate issues there in terms of, you know, the line of sight issue that the mayor raised, you know, you know, the vendor makes a good point about needing to try to draw traction, so everybody has some of that.
And they have their opinion on that, and I'm certainly not up here to, to talk about who should be there or not. I'm just reacting to, I don't want people to think we have an unsafe situation up there. It's very congested there, and when it's not congested, people say, the rally's dying, it's not busy enough. So, but, you know, it gets congested whenever a train comes in, maybe, maybe there needs to be a line set up there or something with regards to the railroad tracks, I don't know, but I'm just saying that from our perspective, we don't have an unsafe situation there any more than we do on Lakeside Avenue with all the parking we have there, and when it gets very congested there, where the, where the photo tower is and things like that. So, I just, because this is a public hearing, I just thought I would respond to that.
Council Hamlin.
I agree with Charlie on a few things. You know, whether you have the food vendors there or a T-shirt vendor, a T-shirt vendor, you could still have people three, three rows deep, and they're still going to be by the train. When the train's there, you know, you've got people walking through there, they're walking through okay. I agree, you know, I mean, that's been there for a long time, haven't had any problems, never going to say that never is never going to happen, because it can. But I don't care what you put there, whether it's food, T-shirt, jewelry, whatever, probably someone down on the pier is going to say, well, now they're competing with me, with, with different things. So, you know, I, I don't know, it's, I, I think I would like to see, probably Joe, because he's representing the client that doesn't want us there, is to talk with the food vendors, and that would be up to Joe, and to talk with them and see if there's some way that this is going to be resolved, and then come before us on something like that. You know, I don't, I don't know if that's agreeable to you, but, you know, to me, that's, that would be one of the steps, is if Mr. Ames have places they could go and, you know, things could be resolved, then that's fine.
And we would just, we just see the city as a big player in that, so having the three of us involved, I think, makes a lot of sense for a conversation like that.
Council Bowden.
Why don't we follow Henry's suggestion and send it to Land and Buildings or an ad hoc committee for those three folks, whoever they are, to meet with the representatives and just explore whether there's a resolution that makes sense for everybody. I'm not sure there is, but I certainly want to, wouldn't want to rule it out, so. Henry's approach seems reasonable and pragmatic.
I mean, I think, I think the city has to be part.
That's what I mean.
Of the, of the talks.
Yeah.
Because as long as the city's position is what it is, which is in terms of status quo, there's really no incentive for a deal, so to speak.
So, that committee meets with these folks and sees, takes questions, answers, figures out if there's a way to, to resolve this, and reports back to the rest of the council.
The thing is, what you got to understand too, is if we decide not to let them there, there's no place on any other city property that they can go to.
Yes, sir, absolutely is.
Where?
Absolutely, the street. We've already got vendors in the street.
Yeah, so you put them in the street alongside the ones that are already there, and it's still going to be blocking their view.
Depends on where in the street.
No, it ain't going to matter.
Plus, plus we're giving up, plus we're giving up motorcycle parking and doing that.
So, let's see if there's a resolution before we get into another discussion about what the problems are. So, I would just move this to the Land and Buildings Committee.
How about you make a motion?
I just did. I call that a motion.
All right, Council Bowden moves to refer this issue to the city council's Land and Buildings Committee as item D4 for study and a recommendation. Is there a second to that motion? Council Doyle seconds that motion.
Not to throw anything in here, I know last year when we came before the council, there was concerns about timing in terms of when the city sends out its renewal.
Believe me, Council, who's, who's Land and Buildings, you or? Council Hamlin will get right on this, won't you?
Oh, yeah. Seems a big fan of it.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to delay this until it becomes.
And we're sure we're going to invite everybody to the party. You're going to invite everybody to the party, right, Bob?
Absolutely.
All right.
All right, we have a motion on the floor made by Council Bowden, seconded by Council Doyle to refer this to Land and Buildings. Any discussion? All those in favor of that reference, please raise a hand. Six votes unanimous, so done. Well, thank you all for that vigorous discussion, shall we say, and hopefully we'll, we'll reach a satisfactory resolution of this down, down the road, and I appreciate all of you coming tonight and participating. Okay, we are on to, it doesn't get any easier. We're on to a proposal to implement city policies for designating emergency lanes and for establishing maintenance standards for emergency lanes, and I refer you to page 41 in your packet, and I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have our Public Works Director, Wes Anderson, here tonight as well. Hopefully, I can simplify this for you. You have a staff report, and you have a council policy on designating emergency lanes, and you have a maintenance standard for emergency lanes. Those are the three documents that you have there. If you look down about two-thirds of the way in the staff report, it's recommending that you move to the Public Works Committee, the designation of emergency lanes, dealing with items of what's going to qualify, what services will we continue, and in addition to possibly, you know, plowing, general maintenance, taking care of potholes, culvert collapses, those types of things. There's issues like solid waste and school buses and different things on those designations. So, we'd probably suggest that we break this into two categories and move the council policy on designating emergency lanes and that activity to the Public Works Committee. And I think the second one, the maintenance standards, is quite a bit more straightforward, and you certainly could adopt that tonight as to the level of maintenance that will be performed on these emergency lanes, be they paved or gravel.
So, say that last part again. Now, I get these maintenance, you're saying the maintenance standards, which are pages 43 and 44, in your opinion, could be passed as submitted.
Those, I think, are pretty straightforward. If you look at that, it says it will maintain, it gives you a couple of examples of types of streets we will maintain, you know, areas that we have need access to the property such as city-owned sanitary sewer pump stations, connect your roads, limited maintenance to streets that we can't determine the status, but they support emergency vehicles or they support us as connect your roads. So, those types of things are what would qualify. So those types of things are what would qualify as emergency lanes. And if you look at the top of page 44, we're saying for both types of roads, meaning paved roads and gravel roads, the city will install and maintain street name signs in the city right away for the entrance to the roads. By law, any other signage needed on the street would go to the abutters of the property owners. We would go in there, we would clear fallen trees and limbs, limbs on living trees that prevent challenges or emergencies to vehicles from using the road. We'd replace failed culverts and other underground drainage structures which pose a risk to our vehicles accessing the road safely. And we'd do the most important one, remove dead animals that may block the road.
Can I, can I ask a question right here? Are these maintenance standards for emergency lanes identical to or comparable to our standards for the maintenance of public roads and, and that?
Let me get through B and C, and then I can answer the question better, I think. So additionally, for paved roads, we're gonna plow and treat with salt to the same standards as the city's Class V roads and streets. Where we will go in and repair potholes, and we'll fund maintenance shims for the roads to, so that emergency vehicles can pass at a reasonable speed. The difference from a shim, we maybe won't go in there and do a full-blown reconstruct. We may not focus on the drainage end of it, but keep the road passable. And then for gravel roads, gravel roads, again, plow and treat with sand to the same standards as the city's Class V gravel streets. Grate and rake the road surface to minimize depression in the surface. Add gravel during the spring thaw, if required, to remake it passable for emergency vehicles. So the answer is yes. The general intent is to treat these emergency lanes almost, and again, the, the ones where we're not gonna post additional signage, we're not necessarily gonna focus on drainage. But we are gonna provide.
And we're never gonna rebuild the road.
We would do shims and maintenance in gravel, depending on the road. So we would provide a very good level of maintenance to those roads. I don't wanna say it'll be identical, but a very good level. And I think it's comparable to what residents on those streets are currently seeing from us now. So I know a concern was raised a couple of weeks ago that the city is looking to get out of its responsibility or save some money. I don't read anything there that indicates that we are trying to walk away from responsibility at a maintenance level to a, to a good quality standard.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, because I think this is a, an important point, is that there's, there's nothing in what we're talking about here to preclude the possibility of what is now considered, by default, a private road from becoming a public road.
Correct.
In other words, this isn't a one-time, once-in-a-lifetime decision that once it's been accepted as an emergency way, it could never be, it could never receive designation as a regular city street. That, that, that designation still is open.
Correct. The designation of an emergency lane is not, any other options going forward.
Okay, Councilman Libman.
The, I just wanna run something by you on, on this Tremont Street. We found to be one of the historic streets that we don't have records for, right? And we're designated as an emergency lane. Am I wrong on that?
No, we ended up accepting that. We found something that triggered that, so Tremont. So we'll continue to work on this.
So my, my, my point's related to the sidewalks in terms of safety for children, particularly, you know. And I'm not sure that it's necessary for emergency vehicles, but to prevent an emergency vehicle from having to go down the street because a kid's walking in the middle of the road because we're not plowing the sidewalk just seems short-sighted.
I don't disagree, though the language reads that way. I think some of the Tremonts that were in question at one point are ultimately, we found out to be streets. I think in the urban core, for the most part, you'll find that to be true, once we're able to do a little more research. And those are probably where you're going to find streets with sidewalks versus some of the remote areas. I guess, I, I haven't looked at the streets that we're looking at, but do we know how many of those have sidewalks? I would say the lion's share do not. So we certainly could focus on a case-by-case where a streetwalk was a necessity for a route-to-school type of thing for kids, and use some common sense there.
So I guess a question before us tonight first here is whether or not the council is comfortable enough with what's on page 43 and 44 to adopt this tonight.
I have one question, please. The gentleman from Eastman Shore Road North mentioned the declaration may be rescinded or disregarded anytime without notice. Is there?
That's on page 42.
Forty-three.
In the other policy.
It's on 43.
Is it 43, too?
Yes, it's 43. It's the second paragraph under, under general.
Okay, it's in both of them, then.
Is that quoting the RSA?
That's the RSA, that's in state law. So we, we don't want to go into this and pretend it doesn't exist. It does. It certainly would not be our intent to ever pull that with no notice, anything like that. But it's in the state law, and we can't alter the state law until it can be done legislatively.
So we need to put this language in?
Regardless of whether we put it in or not, it's in the state law that at any time without notice, a declaration could be rescinded. It would not be our intent to do that without notice, much in the same way we've already indicated that while we work through some of these problematic streets right now, there'll be no change in service or plowing or anything through, you know, next April at a minimum. We wanna put that comfort level out there. So, yes, the speaker was 100% correct, but that's in state law.
Anyone else? We're talking specifically now about what's on page 43 and 44, maintenance standards for emergency lanes. Councilman Libman.
I just go back to that, that declaration under the RSA is, understanding we don't have the authority to undo the RSA, but procedurally, the, the being able to do without notice aspect of it, could we not implement a procedure that walks around that concern to give, give the public some comfort here? Because I can understand that, I mean, it, it may be that we could do that, but this, maybe there's an interim step before that that allows us to provide some notice. Because it seems like I wouldn't wanna be here, us issuing letters to someone saying, you know, tomorrow, that's, we're dropping that service. We couldn't, we couldn't give you notice because of, of the RSA. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a way to envelope this that, that provides some communication to the public ahead of the time that we were consideration of it. In other words, maybe that's, that's an angle in and around it.
I understand exactly what you're saying. So let, let us check with legal counsel on that, because I don't wanna overpromise tonight, because I know there's an opportunity that if any individual who abuts the property objects to a designation as the emergency lane, it could happen now or it could happen in the future. I wanna make sure that we're on safe ground. If we say, hey, we think 120 days is reasonable, and somebody's adamant that, no, I objected today. You need to stop much sooner. Let us just check with legal on how we can do exactly what you're looking at. Happy to do that.
Well, to, to be clear, now, it would take, in this rescind or disregard, it would take a vote of the city council to do that, would it not?
I think it may be more of a procedural vote at that time that we would bring to you. But I think it could be triggered by an individual or individuals out of our control, and not necessarily a staff recommendation.
I mean, I, I guess.
Well, going back to what Councilor Libman just asked about trying to be able to give notice, so. But I believe if there's an objection, I think we'd have to look at what was a reasonable time. And I think it may be more of a procedural vote, or whether you liked it or not, the council's hand may be forced because of a citizen's.
Utilization of this section shall be at the sole and unfettered direction of a town and its officials.
Correct. So you could rescind without any objection from any abutter. But what I want to check into is if there was an abutter who objected to an emergency lane designation, how quickly we would need to, in essence, rescind a policy on that road.
So in other words, after we've declared it to be an emergency way, suddenly someone who is on that street says, I object to this.
Correct. We would have to respect that objection. You know, I'm, my understanding is it takes one abutter on the street. It can't be a non-interested party, so to speak. But it could be one.
And that abutter can object at any time?
Any, it doesn't have to be when the designation is made. It could be at a point in the future.
Okay. So it sounds like we need to clarify that.
Well, that's why I wanna know what reasonable time. If somebody were to say, hey, I put you unnoticed today, that I don't want the emergency lane, that's a private street, and the city has no right being there, what's a reasonable time for the city to do that? And that is what I wanna check with legal. So again, I don't say, of course, we can give 120 days notice, when maybe in reality, you know, a reasonable period might be 30 days.
But I, but I guess my further question is, the city manager, the public works director, nor any other public official, non-elected public official, could just say arbitrarily, I'm not taking care of that street anymore.
Trust me, we're not making that decision. If we have one of those decisions.
Yeah, it would have, whether it's this council or a future.
We're coming to the legislative body, yes.
It would have to be the council that would make that decision.
Correct. And, and then you could, you could put some, if it was your decision to do it, you could put some notice and some parameters on it, absolutely as when you were gonna discontinue whatever the level of service or maintenance was.
All right, so it sounds like we need to do a little more work for this to come back.
For that one question.
Everybody clear on that? Councilor Hammel?
Scott, where Laconia is kinda going through this and now, and kind of, I guess you could say, muddling our way through, trying to do the best we can with the laws we have. What about the rest of the state, cities and towns? I mean, are we doing, do we know if we're doing something? And then this other town is doing something totally different, and that one's different over here? I mean, the legislature basically wiped the hands of all this stuff and initiated this emergency way thing, just to kinda cover the bases. And the lawyers for the municipal association said, yeah, I'd do that, and we won't bother with anything else, basically. But this really belongs in legislature to come up with a plan for the whole state of how we're going to do this. I mean, we don't even know if this stands legal precedent or whatever. Is that true or not true?
No, I think it stands legal precedent. I wanna go back just to clarify one statement that you made. It wasn't the lawyers at the municipal association. It was a, it was a section of the New Hampshire Bar Association that focuses on municipal law. So I just wanna be clear, it wasn't the New Hampshire Municipal Association.
But they basically said, well, the state hasn't done anything with this. So, we, we decide as municipal lawyers that this might be acceptable.
I think they looked at it and says, this is a provision in state law that exists, and this is the one that you should look to utilize as the quickest route to get through the majority of what you need to get through. And the consensus was, if you go in and try to change the statutes on streets, you have a whole domino effect of areas through, through the RSAs, through state law, that you're gonna be impacting. And you may have so many unintended consequences that none of the municipal attorneys thought it wise to go in and try to have a legislative fix to change streets. They said, use the provisions that are available to you and make them work.
So open the can of worms.
Moltenboro, the other night, had a public hearing, of all public hearings, and had 200 and something, or maybe it might have been the 300. I'm gonna say a minimum 200 and something streets that they declared as emergency lanes. Or, I'm sorry, at least had the public hearing on. I don't know 100% whether their select board has voted or not. But they had a public hearing all-encompassing for three, at least 200 and something roads. And their public hearing only took 47 minutes. So I thought, boy, we better get those folks over here to do our public hearing. They know what's going on. But there's, there's were a lot of seasonal residents, and truly, it was people who weren't living there year-round. And it was relatively, I wanna, I don't wanna use the word easy, but it was easier with what they were dealing with. But this is happening in communities around the state. It's not because of, of something the state washed his hand on, it's something that's just come to the forefront. And I think the approaches that are in state law right now are the ones that we're trying to work with and move through this quickly, but with, with prudence and with background.
But what we're doing, is, there's, is there any standards of that, what we're doing is right?
I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of case law, and there's a lot of standards of how we're treating this as, as being a very prudent approach, yes.
So I think what he's asking is, are towns and cities taking the same approach pretty much uniformly across the state?
I, I think I shared with you some of the reasons that Moltenboro claimed of, for the declaration of emergency lanes at the meeting two weeks ago. Some were so they could draft water out of the lake in case they were fighting a fire. And some were because, I forget something else. And some were just.
Or making up reasons.
If, if we, if we don't declare this as an emergency lane, and we can't get a fire truck down there because the road's not plowed and there's a fire, we might lose a big chunk of our tax base. So it was in the community benefit to, you know, declare it as an emergency lane. So communities are looking at this, and, and just as we are, we're trying to work with our citizens.
You'll remember, the briefing on, we had on this earlier was that, when we first got into this subject, was that to be an emergency lane, the road had to be of benefit to somebody other than the people who lived on it. And that's what we're really winking at, for the lawyer's advice.
And believe me, when we declare something as an emergency lane, we haven't declared that it's a public street at that point. It doesn't count towards our miles of highways in the city that qualifies in the formulas for our highway block grants. So trust me, if we're already maintaining some of these roads, and there's incentive for us to get beyond the emergency lane and get them to be accepted as public streets, that's to our financial benefit as well. So I wanna be clear, this is not an op, this is not a attempt from the city to try to get away from maintenance and get away from dollars on, on cases.
Well, I never, I never said that.
Right, but I.
But what I'm saying is, the rest of the cities and towns in the state, I know they're looking at the same problem, but is their solution roughly the same?
It is, for most of them, yes.
All right, so we know what we're doing with pages 43 and 44. So let's go back to 42. And I believe the recommendation from the staff on 42 is to refer the designation, the policy on designated emergency lanes to be referred to the Public Works Committee for study and a recommendation, correct?
Yes.
All right, so a motion to be in order to refer the city council policy designated emergency lanes to the Public Works Committee for study and recommendation. Councilor Hammel makes that motion. Is there a second? Councilor Doyle seconds that motion. Any discussion? All who's in favor of making that recommendation, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. So that will be.
No, I don't think. Who's on the Public Works Committee?
Harmon and.
Isn't even on my.
We'll put those names back on here.
Clerk, we need to get that added to the.
Shoot me.
Is that because there's nothing on their agenda now?
Now that there is, I'm going to add it.
Okay, so that'll be item number one.
Councilor Bolduc, Councilor Bear and Councilor Bounce.
That's what I said.
So that'll be number one on their agenda? All right.
But all the, all the committees, the names have been dropped off.
Yeah.
You all know what committee you're on.
And heaven knows we can't remember who's on what today.
No, Armin is the chair.
Okay, we ready to move on?
Tonight?
Yep.
Are we going to designate a meeting tonight? Did I miss that?
He'll have to make a motion to, with a date.
All right, so we have two recommenda, two, two, we voted to put two things in committee. This will be item number one under Public Works and we added an item tonight under land and buildings, item four as well.
I want to just go back to the, what we just added to the land and buildings.
Yeah.
And if there's nothing else on September 11th, which is our next meeting, is there anything before the council meeting on that day?
There's nothing at this point.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to do the Bike Week thing on that night, probably at 6 o'clock, that'll give plenty of time, because I know Joe's still here and we can contact the other three vendors to have them come in that night.
Okay, so Councilor Hamel makes a motion to hold a meeting of the Land and Buildings Committee to discuss item number four, the one we just added tonight on September 11th at 6:00.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. Is there a second for that motion, please?
Second.
Somebody second it, Councilor Bounce? Discussion, all's in favor, please raise a hand. If six votes, the affirmative, that motion is scheduled.
And also?
Meeting is scheduled.
Also, I'd like to make a motion to remove item 14D, it's like three, Lakeport Fire Station, from the Land and Buildings Committee.
Yeah, I guess we can.
Are you in agreement with that at this point in time, Councilor Bolduc?
Yes.
Sold.
Okay. You second that motion?
Go.
All right, so Councilor, Councilor Hamel moves to strike item three from the Land and Buildings Committee, um, agenda, and that motion was seconded by Councilor Bolduc. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. We are on to discussion regarding placing a question on November 17th.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think we still have the maintenance standards on the item on 18F that we haven't disposed of yet. You've, you've done the emergency lanes policy, but we have the second component, which is the maintenance. Did you refer both of them to the Public Works Committee?
No, we simply, we simply carried the second one over to the next meeting.
Okay, I didn't hear that, sorry.
I'm sorry, I should have made that clearer. So the maintenance part of that will be carried over under unfinished business to the next meeting.
And that'll be pending a legal interpretation of, about the notice to disclose, okay.
All right.
So you're going to motion to table it to the September 11th meeting pending a legal opinion on notice?
I'll make that motion. Councilor Lippman makes that motion, is there a second? Councilor Bounce seconds the motion. All those in favor, or any discussion first? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. All right, now we're on to item 18G, discussion regarding placing a question on November 7th ballot. This is the Keno 603, and I think we're all on the same page on that. Uh, so what I would be looking for, first of all, does anybody want to discuss this? Are we ready to go right to making a motion on Keno? All right, motion to be in order to, to add to the November 7, 2017 municipal election ballot, a yes or no vote on the question of permitting the operation of the New Hampshire Keno 603 game at qualifying establishments within the city. Someone care to make that motion? Councilor Hamel, is there a second? Councilor Doyle seconds the motion. Any discussion?
I note that there were four people who commented.
Councilor Allen has a discussion.
Huh? I was just.
He was just commenting.
I was just commenting.
You were commenting.
I was commenting that there were actually four people who spoke on this issue when we conducted the public, the public hearing.
Any, any further discussion? All's in favor of putting Keno on the November 7th ballot, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, the motion carries. Thank you. Hand that down to the clerk, please. Okay, discussion regarding a trademark negotiation between Laconia Motorcycle Week Association, Hot Leathers and the City of Laconia. Does the counselors have copies of that?
No, you asked me to print some and bring them. You looking for the?
Looking for the contract?
The agreement?
The agreement that came from Motorcycle Week Association or just the actual contract, the seven-page contract?
Either or both.
I've got, yes.
You've got, you've got a yes. All right, well, he's handing that out, I'll quickly brief you on this. Currently, uh, the, the federal trademark registration for a number of words relative to the motorcycle, to Motorcycle Week are registered trademarks for a company called, called Good Sports Incorporated of a Connecticut corporation. And the words that they have, they have trademarked five years ago are America's original riding rally, in Laconia we ride, Laconia Bike Week, Laconia Motorcycle Rally, Laconia Motorcycle Week and World's Oldest Motorcycle Rally. Those six sayings, groups of words are trademarked to Good Sport, um, for use on pins, patches and clothing only. Everybody understand that? So this doesn't cover any possible use of those words, it includes only their use on pins, patches and clothing. So if you want to use the words, for example, Laconia Motorcycle Week on a jacket or a t-shirt or a pin or a patch, you cannot do so without permission from Good Sport, okay? Because they registered the trademark. Now, the Motorcycle Week Association enters into this because five years ago, when Good Sport, which is also known as Hot Leathers, um, that's their, their, their doing business as name. When they registered those trademarks, there was objection on the part of the Motorcycle Week Association, which itself had never registered those trademarks. And so they entered into an agreement between those two parties, the association and Good Sport, to, to, under which the association recognized the legitimacy of the trademarks being held by Good Sports in return for a share of the royalties to be collected under them. So in effect, the association said, yes, we, we acknowledge you have the trademark and, and we will not protest that. In return, the association got two things. One, it got a share of the royalty revenue, 70%, which is outlined in the, in a contract. And also, under the terms of that agreement, Good Sports slash Hot Leathers agreed to be a quote presenting sponsor of the rally every year, for the length of the contract, which was 10 years. At the end of 10 years, under the language of the contract, Good Sport had the right to cancel the contract and hold the, all the rights themselves, paying no royalties to anybody or anything, just they could cancel the contract at the end of 10 years. And we're five years into that contract. So, um, what is happening here as far as the public is concerned, uh, the, for the public's, um, knowledge here, the council has been made aware of what's going on here in non-public sessions over the previous six months or so, on the, non-public on the grounds that this was a legal negotiation, which it was. So over the past few months, what has happened is the city has intervened, uh, the council has intervened, saying that the council and the city is, should be the rightful holder of these trademarks. And so we have been in negotiations with Good Sports slash Hot Leathers over the past few months about what the price would be, if you want to call it that, for transferring the rights to these trademarks from Good Sports to the City of Laconia, so that the people would own the words, in effect. And we have, so Scott and I have been involved in those negotiations in association with the Motorcycle Week Association itself, keeping them in the loop, so to speak, as we are members of that association. And we have reached a contract agreement, um, and so what we're looking for tonight is permission for, for the city manager to sign the agreement that has been, that we've come to terms on with Good Sports for that transfer. Uh, and the cost of that transfer to the city, so we're above board about everything here, would basically, there's a lot of legalese here, but the contract basically calls for, for two monetary or potential monetary considerations. Uh, the first is, not surprisingly, that any royalties the city would collect on those trademarks going forward, uh, Good Sports itself would not be subject to, in effect forever. So in other words, and they're not now because they own the trademarks, so now, so they don't pay themselves, obviously, but going forward, the city could never charge them a royalty fee for the use of these words. Uh, we've agreed to that. The second consideration that's potentially monetary is that, um, in the, in the, in the anniversary year, the 100th anniversary year of the rally, which is 2023, if the city, and this is a big if, if the city decides that year and that year alone to get into the sponsorship business, that any money collected by the city, not the association now, not the, just the city, any money collected by the city in that one year, 2023, or for the rally of 2023, they would get 10% of. So that, if we collect nothing, they get nothing. Now, what do you mean by that? That means, as you know, the association now has corporate sponsorships, uh, the largest one of which is Progressive Insurance. So if the city were to decide it wanted to get into that business on 100th anniversary year to make money, and the city decided it wanted to license the official bourbon of Motorcycle Week or the official pickup of Motorcycle Week or something like that, if we did that, and again, that's a big if, and somebody paid us a bunch of money for that designation, they would get 10% of that money. So those are the only two monetary considerations here. Now, the document you have in front of you, um, tonight, that the city manager distributed, it's a resolution, right? Everybody have a copy of that? Signed by Jennifer Anderson at the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that resolution was drafted by Mike Pearson, intellectual property attorney here in the City of Laconia.
It's, it's the single sheet that came out?
It's a single sheet.
Okay.
All right, that resolution was, was drafted by Mike Pearson. And because both Hot Leathers and the City of Laconia are dues-paying members of the Motorcycle Week Association, it was his opinion that, that to stay in, in, uh, good stead with New Hampshire law, it was necessary for the Motorcycle Week Association to acknowledge that Hot Leathers was going to make a new contract with the City of Laconia. And basically, that document says that the Motorcycle Week Association knows that, is familiar with the new contract and agrees to all its terms and conditions, okay? And the reason for that is they already have a contract with Hot Leathers. In effect, by us signing a new contract with the association, they, Hot Leathers, is in effect in violation of their contract with the association. So that what you have before you in legalese is an acknowledgement on the part of the association and it passed in by unanimous vote by their board of directors last week, acknowledging that this new agreement with the city is in effect going to null and void the contract they have with Hot Leathers themselves, and they agree to having that happen and will not protest it. Everybody got that? So basically, they're signing off, the association by that vote last week, signed off on saying, we're good with this. Okay? Any questions? Comments?
Congratulations.
All right, so, thank you. All right, so a motion would be in order to authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city, a trademark assignment and licensing agreement between the City of Laconia and Good Sports, Inc., a Connecticut corporation, as presented. Somebody care to make that motion? Councilor Doyle makes that motion, is there a second? Councilor Bolduc seconds that motion. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. If six votes, the affirmative, that motion is approved, and I thank you. And, you know, I, I, I'll just add parenthetically to that, that, uh, we, the city manager and I both enjoyed, uh, an excellent relationship with Good Sports slash Hot Leathers and the Motorcycle Week Association in getting this done and getting these trademarks where I think they belong in the hands of the people of Laconia, and I thank the officials from both of those entities for being, being cooperative and, and very reasonable in, in making that happen. Okay, next up is a transfer request from the education stabilization account to the Laconia School District for the fiscal year 2018. That is on page 45 of your packet, and they are asking for a transfer for the current fiscal year of $137,102. Do you have any more background to add to that, Mr. Myers?
I think this was the figure that was brought forward during the discussions about the stabilization account, reserve account being set up with the teacher's contract. The school did fund some dollars prior to the close of the last fiscal year to this in the amount of?
$200.
$200,000. So in essence, they're requesting 137,000 out of the 200 they put in. Some were this fiscal year, the city had still committed to move at one time $500,000 that we were going to do after sale of two properties, that hasn't occurred yet. But this is a, a known request and we expected it and it's in line with, with what we thought.
Questions or comments? Before we get to motions? Okay, a motion to be in order to transfer 137,102 dollars from account 82-101-015-0000, Laconia School District Education Stabilization to account 02-380-022-0001, school district revenue to assist with funding the five-year Laconia Educational Association contract that began with fiscal year 2018. A lot of words there. Someone care to make that motion, please? Councilor Hamel makes that motion, is there a second? Councilor Bolduc seconds the motion, discussion? All's in favor of that transfer, I'm sorry, Councilor Hamel?
Yeah, what is the, did the school ever add anything to that like they said they were going to do at the end of the school?
This was the 200,000 they transferred.
Above what we had there to begin with?
This was a whole new, brand-new account.
This isn't the capital account that we set up, this is the account that we set up with $1 prior to the end of the last fiscal year.
So that's not the account that the revenue from the building is in?
It will be going in, but we haven't sold that building yet in order to move those dollars yet.
Okay.
So this is the 200,000 the school captured before June 30th.
Okay.
And we knew they were requesting 137. Our 500 will be going into that account at some point before June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Lippman?
I think it's also correct that if they need additional monies at the balance of that 200 goes first before the 500 would.
Yes. And they have the ability to add additional money as it's available to them at the end of any fiscal year as well.
Okay.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving that transfer, please raise a hand. If six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Request for city council consent for assignment of the cable television contract, or not con, yeah. Franchise, I'm, so thank you, Councilor. Franchise agreement from Metrocast to Atlantic Broadband, Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as was reported in the paper, Atlantic Broadband has purchased Metrocast, so with that, they, they will be taking over the franchise agreement with the city. Uh, you have a staff report prepared for you by John Gardner, our purchasing specialist, who also sat in on our cable franchise renewal negotiations, which probably took place in around 2013, 2014, and that's the one where we shared with multiple communities in our area to cost-share the legal services. Um, I'm going to try to let Mr. St. Clair down very gently tonight, but much is the same with the franchise renewal agreement, that the cost of service and the content of service were not allowed to be a part of it, and that's in federal regulations through the FCC and the, as I've said then and I'll say tonight, the franchise renewal agreement is clearly stacked against communities. It is not open for negotiation tonight. We have done our diligence, looked at the wherewithal of Atlantic Broadband, I believe in here it says they're the ninth-largest cable operator, they do have the wherewithal to provide the service based on our current franchise agreement. They are bound by that agreement, so they can't do anything less. We are bound by that agreement, we can't require anything additional, we can certainly make requests of them once it happens. I'm not optimistic about requests would be well-received where there's a contract in place, I just want to temper expectations. I hate to say it, this is really more or less of a housekeeping, and if you chose not to take any action within a 60-day window, it goes into effect anyway.
Yeah.
That's the good news.
You're telling us we're completely impotent. All right, any questions or comments before we get to a motion? Councilor Bear?
Just to make Charlie feel better, there is a franchise fee that the city receives from Metrocast and will from Atlantic Broadband, it's about 340,000 a year, so, you know, there's a little good there.
Anyone else? Okay, a motion to be in order to approve the assignment of the cable television franchise agreements from Metrocast to Atlantic Broadband and to authorize the city manager to sign the resolution on behalf of the city. Who wants to be guilty of making the motion? Councilor Bear. Councilor Bear is on the record. Councilor Bolduc seconds the motion, any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, the motion carries, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I make a motion that we extend our council meeting hours?
You don't think we can do the rest of this in 10 minutes?
Let's do it. If you can do it, that's fine, I'm fine with that.
I doubt we can either, so I'll accept your motion. What, what do you want to say?
I don't know, you think we can do it by 10:15?
Even with the sidewalks? 10:15?
Woo!
All right, Councilor Doyle makes the motion to extend the, the meeting to 10:15. Is there a second? Councilor Hamel seconds that motion. All's in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, okay, the meeting time has been extended to 10:15. The meeting time has been extended to 10:15. Okay. Where are we? Last item of new business, request to accept the revised city council rules of procedure. Council Doyle.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to look at it?
Yeah. Great, Sean.
That's that one, not me.
Well.
Okay. I would like to make a motion, then, to accept the revised city council rules of procedure as presented.
Second.
Motion is made by Council Doyle to approve the suggested changes to council rules and procedures as presented, seconded by Council Bear. Any discussion?
Only that prematurely, the counselor from Ward Four.
Want a time limit?
I don't care.
Go ahead.
Invoked the abstention vote. I just want to know that. I just want everybody to know that.
I did it for you.
Thank you.
Is that what?
Invoked the abstention vote, which is now part of our council rules.
Right.
Anyone else? All right. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise a hand. If six votes, the affirmative, the motion carries. Thank you.
May I also make a motion that we remove it from the agenda?
To what?
Remove it from my agenda, please.
I'll second that.
All right. Council Doyle makes a motion to remove item four from the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee Agenda, seconded by Council Hamill. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We are on to unfinished business. Request to declare city streets as emergency lanes. This is on page 52.
May I make a motion to table that since we've not made any definition as to what the maintenance is?
Second.
We haven't set the maintenance standards on it, so I don't know that we can adopt them as emergency lanes.
I second.
So you don't want to take this up tonight?
I don't think we need to until we know what we're going to be voting on.
Any issue with that?
No, I think that's approved.
Okay. Council Doyle moves to table this item to a date certain.
When will it, we're having our next meeting.
Leave it on the table.
You could say pending approval of the maintenance standards. Pending approval of the maintenance standards?
Yeah.
Okay. Pending approval of the maintenance standards.
That makes sense.
Is there a second? Council Boldick seconds that motion, so we're tabling this until we have made a decision on maintenance standards, and then we'll bring it back up again, take it off-table and bring it up again. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Okay. Next up is the second reading of Resolution 2017-22 relative to authorizing and appropriation of an anticipated revenue from the state of New Hampshire Highway Block grant funds of $294,633.74 per the adoption of Senate Bill 38. That resolution is on page 54. Any discussion before we get to motions on that? So this is approving this on second reading, correct?
Right.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. So Council Hamill moves to approve Resolution 22 on second reading. Who seconded it? Council Bear seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. If six votes, affirmative, that motion carries as well. All right. We're down to snowmobiles.
Just a point of clarification from the manager, if I could. I'm trying to remember, we did not factor that in our budget for the current year, right? That's why we're doing what we did?
We did not. We knew the number was going to be approximately 275, but we did not do it, so that's why we have the public hearing tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Request to allow snowmobiles to use the sidewalk across the Weers Beach Bridge over the channel and the railroad. Page 55 of your packet. This was tabled at our last meeting. Yes. So I need a motion to bring this off the table for discussion. So I'll make that motion, Council Doyle. Is there a second? Council Lippman seconds that motion. All those in favor of bringing this item off-table, please raise a hand. I'm sorry, do it again. Those against, please raise a hand. We have five votes yes and one vote no. Motion carries. All right. So this is back on the agenda again. Back on the agenda, back on the table again. And I think we went over all this last week, but I think we do have some clarification information, do we not, since our last meeting?
We do, and I may ask Wes to come to the podium on some of these points, but the question were, so we determined that last year was the first year we maintained the bridge itself. We also maintained the sidewalk going north, I guess, from the bridge up to Cumberland Farms. So that was the length. We did not do any maintenance on the southern side of the bridge leading up to Lucerne Ave or the White Oaks Road area where some of the trails may have been emptying out. So that was the maintenance that we performed last year, was the bridge up to Cumberland Farms. We have additionally looked to see if there was another option, and this is where I'm going to have Wes come up and, are you ready to speak to this tonight or not unveil this?
No, okay.
Wes went to Canada on a research trip, and he'll fill you in on what he found. Not really, just on the internet to Canada.
Yes. Put it simply, ex-military, first thing I thought of in this particular case, because the channel crossing is so short, was to do a float bridge of some type. Actually, I found out that there's a snowmobile club in Canada that has already designed one and has one in place that they use every winter. I'm working with Watermark Marine, because they know the engineering firm that designed the one up in Canada, so they're working to see what the issues were in regards to that. Haven't got any feedback back from Watermark yet. They're trying to get in contact with it, but that's the option that we're looking at. Have done some initial contact with Department Environmental Services, and they didn't throw me out the door. So they haven't closed that door yet. I have not contacted Marine Patrol yet, but I think it will eliminate their skimming problem with snowmobile skimming through the channel, so I don't think they'll throw us out the door for that one either. So I think it's a viable option. The question is, is it economically viable and all the other stuff? We still have yet to see.
And we've tried to reach out to some of the snowmobile associations regarding the cost and see if they're willing to share. Obviously, it's a bridge that would have to be installed, you know, in the late fall sometime and removed in the spring, but we sent me a link, and there was pictures or a video of a volunteer group of a snowmobile association up in Canada that undertook that, and I think it was a much shorter span than we're talking about here. And then, obviously, we'd have to work with how to get the folks from the Lucerne Ave area, White Oaks Road, coming down, because we are planning on maintaining the sidewalk down to the post office and stuff this year. So we'd have to work with some private property owners on getting them to an appropriate point at the channel. Once crossed in Endicott Rock Park, again, if this all were to move forward, they've got easy access to the rail at that point, which is very important for us, because we don't want them traveling down the newly refurbished area of Lakeside Ave or the sidewalks or definitely not the boardwalk. So getting them into the rail at that area would be a positive as well. So early stages, but that's kind of the route we're looking at right now versus, you know, that compromise of how can we accommodate both groups? So we're happy to take any additional direction or answer any questions that we can tonight.
So I can brief the council on a conversation that I had with the president of the Lakes Region Snowmobile Club. I can't attest for the accuracy of everything that he told me, but I have no reason to, the couple of points that I've checked up on, I have no reason to doubt what he said to be the truth. So the issue is, from their perspective, is that the railroad tracks are the gateway, in effect, to almost all of New Hampshire for snowmobilers. So the question is, how do you get to the railroad tracks from various places? And apparently, one of the major pathways is coming from the northern part of Laconia and from Guilford, is to get on the power line easement that starts, in effect, in back of Walmart out by the airport. And that power easement comes out on Endicott Street East, more or less directly across the street from the top of the go-kart track. Okay? So, or the Rusty Birthlaze property there where he has the batting cage and the jungle gym thing and the, right at the top of that property, on the opposite side of the street, is where that power easement comes out. So the question is, then, how do they get from there to the bridge? And how they do that is they, most of that distance, all but a very short piece of it, there's a sidewalk there. Relatively narrow sidewalk once you get north of the fire station, a regular width sidewalk between the fire station and the bridge. So short answer is, they go down the sidewalk, and apparently always have, and the city has never plowed that sidewalk. So we're talking about from the batting cage jungle gym thing to the bridge. We didn't plow it last winter, so they didn't complain about it last winter, because they could ride on it. Not legally, I guess, we found out, because they never had city permission that we can tell to do so, but in effect, we didn't plow the sidewalk, so they had access to the sidewalk. And then last year, up until last year, they had access to the bridge as well, because, and the Lakeside Avenue sidewalk wasn't plowed either. So they could go all the way from the end of that power easement into Endicott Park on the sidewalk, in effect, all that direction, and that's been their normal path. So last winter, the city started plowing the bridge, but then stopped at the southern end of the bridge and didn't go any further. So the rest of the sidewalk was still snow-packed, so they could ride on that until they got to the bridge. And then apparently, illegally again, the snowmobilers just rode across the bridge on the sidewalk, on the concrete base, to get to the park last year. So the issue is now, as clear as I can put it, is if the city this winter starts plowing the sidewalk between the jungle gym and the bridge, now they don't have any legal way of getting from the end of that power line easement to Endicott Park. So that's what this really comes down to. Now, what the city manager alluded to and the public works director alluded to is the possibility of finding some back doorway of getting from the end of that power easement to Endicott Park. Now, the city has a piece of property in the middle of that, the Weers Community Park, that theoretically, we might find a way to access that would get us as far as Lucerne. But then you'd have to find a way to get across private property from Lucerne to the channel in order to make the bridge feasible, if it's feasible on cost or whatever, other items as well. So that's kind of the hornet's nest we're in there. What I don't understand is from, and I asked this question of Council Doyle, is that if the reason why people who live in that neighborhood wanted the sidewalk cleared was so that they could walk to the post office, why did the city not plow the sidewalk to the post office?
Ask him.
Because I thought they were plowing to the post office, and it turned out they weren't. So that's my fault on that piece. That's why we're going to get set up properly for this coming winter.
In all honesty, though, people have been wanting that plowed for years, the bridge, because it's not a brand-new thing that they're walking.
Why can't we plow it and allow the snowmobiles to use it anyway?
Because it tears up the...
Safety, I would presume.
It would put us in basically responsibility for an issue, an accident on it.
Council Bear?
Scott, what about the insurance companies? How does this affect for safety? Is there anything there that would prohibit, I mean, to allow, when it says they can't go on sidewalks and they are allowed to go on sidewalks, will this be an insurance risk?
No, I think if we authorize travel on the sidewalks and posted as such, then we're within our rights to do so. So that's just a choice that we would make, and if that was the decision, we would not plow sidewalks in that area and allow them to continue what they've been doing. We just would properly post it so that the pedestrians were aware that in the wintertime that this was an approved snowmobile route.
Council Lippman?
Again, I think, you know, you always make the point that we're a tourism area. Snowmobiles are a big, one of the biggest tortoises that we get. In fact, it's bigger than skiing statewide in terms of tourism. You know, seeing how we plow sidewalks, there seems to be, I believe, a coding there by necessity or by reality that most sidewalks are not there to pavement anyways. And, you know, in the old days, they used to roll the streets in Laconia as opposed to, isn't there...
They didn't have snowmobiles back then.
True, but I'm just saying, my point being that, is there not another way? And I think you're trying to find another way, and I guess with my statement, I think we need to table this, so you come back with more information.
So that's what I say. Give us two weeks to come through and at least see if we're getting any traction, no pun intended, with this direction. And if we say to you, we're running into either cost issues or state issues or whatever, then we can, you know, bring that to you and you can forge a direction. But I think if we get a couple of weeks, we'll have a better sense of where we're at.
The state still owns the sidewalks on Route 3.
It's, when sidewalks get put in the state highway, they basically turn it over to the city and make the city responsible for repair, maintenance, and operation of the sidewalk. So that's why we have to plow it. If the sidewalk goes bad, we've got to repair it.
So we're responsible for repairing the sidewalk over the bridge?
Correct.
Then we better repair it, because the salt's eating the heck out of it.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense.
We got bridgery placement coming up in a couple of years.
Do you need a motion to table?
Yeah, but that's the train one.
So, it's at 10:15, right?
Right. We got, we can do it.
Not okay, okay, but okay for the moment.
I was just going to make a motion to table this.
Yes.
May I make one further comment here?
Rule of precision, who's discussion after motions made, right?
But it hasn't been seconded.
Asking her to hold off on making the motion.
She made it.
No, it wasn't a seconded. Once a motion table is made, it's non-debatable. So we need to do it.
So would...
I will wait.
All right. Thank you. I just want to clarify here that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that whether we do it tonight, well, obviously, we're not going to do it tonight, whenever we do it, it would take, regardless of whether the city plows the sidewalk or not, it would, now that we're aware of what the law is, it would take a affirmative vote of the city council to allow snowmobiles to travel on that sidewalk, correct? So we can't, if we do nothing, they can't.
Correct.
Did you say this is a floating bridge?
Correct.
Makes you want to run.
Realize the current going through there. What's going to hold that there?
We have designs in the Army Field Book up to 11 feet per second.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to table this till we get additional information, please.
Second.
All right. So the motion's made by Council Doyle, seconded by Council Bounds, was it? All right. Motion on the floor is to table this item until, until what?
Do we have additional information? Do we receive additional information?
Move of additional information from staff. All those in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. This is tabled and will remain on the agenda under unfinished business. Okay. Nominations, elections, quickly, we can do this.
Better hurry. There's a bunch of them.
All right. So let's get to nominations here, appointments. All right. First up, I need a motion to reappoint Mamie Blaisdell Schultz to a regular position on the Conservation Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2020. Moved by Council Boldick, seconded by Council Hamill. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Next up, we need to appoint, or motion to reappoint, Richard Christopher to a regular position on the Conservation Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2020. Moved by Council Boldick, seconded by Council Doyle. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Next up, we would be, a motion would be in order to reappoint Patrick Wood to a regular position on the Downtown Tiff Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2020. Council Bear makes that motion, seconded by Council Boldick. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, the affirmative, that motion is approved. raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that, that motion is approved. Next up is a move, motion needed to reappoint Suzanne Purley to a regular position on the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2020. Moved by Counselor Bolduc, seconded by Counselor Bounds. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that appointment is made. And lastly, we need a motion to reappoint Stephen Bogert to a regular position on the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2020. Counselor Hamel makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion is approved. We barely squeaked by.
Yeah, it's barely.
Okay, council comments. We have four minutes.
One quick one.
One quick one.
The Public Works Director ought to look into getting a Bailey Bridge.
A Bailey Bridge?
A Bailey Bridge. That would work perfectly there.
And Armin needs to schedule a meeting.
For what?
Public Works.
Public Works for the...
Public Works.
Roads.
We're telling them on our next meeting, before our next meeting.
We got that.
He's got an hour, so it'll have to be after that or four o'clock in the afternoon or anytime. But you're in...
Why do we have to do it on the eleventh? It's up to Counselor Bolduc to schedule that meeting.
I beg your pardon?
It's up to Counselor Bolduc to schedule that meeting.
That's what I'm saying.
If he doesn't want to do it now, he doesn't have to.
He didn't know what it was for.
Why can't we do it on the twenty-fifth?
Be the second meeting of the month in September.
Twenty-fifth, yep.
The six o'clock?
You want an hour or a half?
Who knows?
He'll take at least an hour.
Well, six or six-thirty?
We said six.
Six.
Five?
Okay, so I guess that's, so, so we're talking about, this thing's always going to go a long way here. September twenty-fifth at six o'clock? All right, so Counselor Bolduc moves to schedule a meeting of the Lands and Buildings Committee. I guess we're going to now say this is item number three because we canceled number three. So this is, this is the new number three.
Public Works.
Item, to discuss item number three slash four.
Public Works, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Public Works Committee.
Oh, I've got my two committees mixed up here. That's right, this is the one that didn't have any.
Public Works, number one.
So it's item number one.
Item number one.
On Public Works on September twenty-fifth at six P.M. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Counselor Bounds seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Did everybody raise a hand? I didn't see.
Yes.
Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, any other council comments? All right, there's, we have a need for a brief non-meeting after this one on labor negotiation issue. And so we'll, we'll have to clear the room for that. Thank you for coming tonight. And I will clear the meeting adjourned at ten thirteen P.M. Thank you. Not used to that thing yet.
He's sitting there all night. He's still there. You probably could.
Go on without me. I'll be back.
Huh?
Go without you.
Oh, oh.
See you, Dave.
I don't know who's on first or who's on second.
Another quick night, huh, Donna?
Yep.
Say again?
I wouldn't call quick, but it's a messed-up one. I don't know where the heck we are.